Here we are. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Minneapolis City Planning Commission meeting of August 11, 2014. My name is Ted Tucker. I serve as President of the Planning Commission. Joining me today are Commissioners Gagnon, Kronzer, Lipke-Pier, Gusselman, Slack, and Forney. At this time, please be sure that all your electronic devices are on silent. First order of business is to approve the actions from the meeting of July 28, 2014. May I have a motion to approve those actions? Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Those actions are approved. The next item on our agenda is to approve the agenda. We'll sort through the items printed on the agenda that I hope you picked up on the table outside. We'll go through them one by one and decide which will be put aside for discussion, which might be continued, which will go on the consent agenda, and which will be withdrawn. So as I read through them, listen carefully, and if you want to discuss the item because you disagree or want to modify the staff recommendation, please raise your hand. Number one, Lime Apartments and VFW Parking, 2900-2910 Lindale Avenue South. Is there anyone here wishing to modify or disagree with the staff recommendation on item number one? If not, that will go on consent. Item number two, Hound's Teeth Recording Studio, 4501 Minnehaha Avenue. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation? If not, that will go on consent as well. Item number three, Elan Uptown East, 2825 and 2837 Dupont Avenue South. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, we'll put that on discussion. Item number four, Elan Uptown Center in West 2828 Dupont Avenue South. Are these items essentially the same? No, they're different. Okay. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify staff recommendation on item number four?
That's the signage?
That's the signage, yes. Different properties. Okay, you want to discuss that. Item number five, 1121 Fillmore Street Northeast, rezoning. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation? I don't see anyone. We'll put number five on consent. Item number six is MINC Keds, 875 1/2 Hennepin Avenue East, also known as 1133 Taylor Street Northeast. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item number six? If not, that will go on consent as well. We expect to discuss item number seven, Carmel Plaza and Square, 2910 through 2936 Pillsbury Avenue South. So that'll be discussion item. Item number eight, Blaisdell Apartments, 2118 Blaisdell Avenue, has been requested to be withdrawn, so we'll deal with that as a withdrawal. Item number nine, the New Franklin, 1013 to 1021 Franklin Avenue East. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? You want to discuss item number nine, the New Franklin? Okay. That will be on discussion as well. Item number 10, Southwest High School, 3414 West 47th Street, is to be continued to the meeting of August 25, 2014. Item number 11, Theater Garage and Marquee Apartments, 2004 and 2018 Lindale Avenue South, will be on discussion. And item number 12, zoning code text amendments regarding farm stands will be discussed as well. So, let's see. For discussion, we have items 3, 4, 7, 9, 11, and 12. Items for the -- did you -- no. For the consent agenda, we have items number 1, 2, 5, 6. Item to be continued, 1, number 10, and 1 to be withdrawn, item number 8. Okay, again, items for discussion, 3, 4, 7, 9, 11, and 12. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Okay, moved in second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda as amended, say aye. Okay, that's our new agenda. So we will start with committed the whole. I don't think we had any items to come forward, so we will move on to the public hearings. So first item will be, may I have a motion to accept the withdrawal of item number 8, the Blaisdell Apartments? Moved in second to accept the withdrawal. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, that's withdrawn. Next item is item to be continued, may I have a motion to continue item number 10 to the meeting of August 25, 2014? Okay, moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, that one item is to be continued. Then we have items on the consent agenda. I will open the public hearing for these items again. Items number 1, 2, 5, and 6. Again, if anyone wishes to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation for those items, please let me know right now. Otherwise, we will leave them on the consent agenda, and I will close the public hearing for those items and ask for a motion to approve staff recommendations for those consent agenda items. Moved? It's moved in second at all. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is approved, and we move to the items for the discussion. So our first item is number 3, Elan Uptown East, 2825 and 2837 Dupont Avenue South. And staff is Hillary Dorak.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a project for the Elan Uptown Apartments. Item number 3 is for what historically had been called the Bennett East Block, and item number 4 is for the Center and West Blocks. I can go through both of them or just handle them one at a time. What would you prefer, Chair?
Do the two at the same time, I think.
Both at the same time, okay. The Center -- or, excuse me, the site plan that you see is for the Staff -- or the Center Block. And a number of blocks specifically has two freestanding signs, one on each side of the building, and then a handful of other signs that I won't spend a lot of time discussing because they are more directional or informational signs pertaining to the building itself, management signs, enter and exit signs for the underground parking garage. However, they do have either the name of the building, Elan Uptown East, or the logo for Elan, which is a lowercase "e" in a specific font on them. And so it makes all of these signs signs because they do show the name of the building, and they don't meet a definition for directional signage in our code. Specifically, though, in this case, you are looking at the freestanding sign. It's not a monument sign as the design of it does not meet our definition. For this to be a monument sign, the base of the sign, so where you see the two legs, would have to be as wide as the top of the sign, and the base and the top of the sign couldn't be separated by more than one foot. So because of how it's designed, this technically is a freestanding sign by definition, which we don't allow. They are also asking for two of these signs, again, one on each side of the block as it stretches between Colfax and Dupont, on each side near the front entrance to the building. And they're seeking exceptions to the sign allowances of the zoning code, and this was done as a planned unit development. And so they are needing to provide amenity points for the exception through the PUD, and the amenity points that they're providing are -- is that the building meets LEED Silver certification, which they had not requested when this project went through initially. So it is LEED certified. So they are -- we are giving them or requesting that you give them the 10 points to meet that and then approve the sign plans. The freestanding signs, then, that will be on each side, this is what it would look like at night. So if you look at the proposed signs, so during the day you would see the background of the sign, but then at night, that background would disappear and just those letters would light up either internally or halo lit through the way that the sign is fabricated. And those signs, because of the grade changes on the different sides of the block, are going to be located in the planters that are near the entrances. And those planters were done prior to them proposing the signage. So on each side of the street, and this is just one street, for example, that sign would be located in here. So the width of the sign would fit within the planter itself. And that is truly the exception that is needed for this one. On the Center and West Blocks, then, the exception that's needed is for the sign not being a monument sign. And I know, sorry if that's confusing, but then moving to that item number four, they're proposing on just the Center Block, just to have one of those monument, freestanding signs that's not a monument sign, and it's -- that looks exactly like the other two, and that's what the exceptions were needed. When this project was approved initially by the Planning Commission, they had more points than they needed for the PUD, so they aren't required to provide any more amenities because they provided more than enough when approved. So we are recommending approval of both of these, and I'm here if there's any questions.
Let's see. I don't see any questions. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. I'll hear from the applicant first, if you have anything to say. I was going to hear from the applicant first, if you don't mind. Are you the applicant?
Hi, my name is --
Are you the applicant?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was asking for the applicant to speak first. But we'll certainly hear from you.
Good afternoon, Chair Tucker, members of the Commission. I'm Carol Lansing. I'm an attorney at Fagri Baker Daniels, 90 South 7th Street, representing Gray Star Development. Gary Wallace with Gray Star is also here. Given staff's recommendation of approval, we did not plan a presentation for you. Certainly want to address any questions that you have, and perhaps after we hear the opposition, there'll be something to respond to. The only remark I'll make then before seeing if you have other questions is to let you know that on the East Block, if that were a corner lot, it could have signs on two street frontages. It's a through lot, so it seems to me it should be treated in the same way, that having a sign on both sides of the building is not inconsistent with the intent of the code. And for this three-block development, there will be only three monument signs, one on each street. There won't be a wall sign and a monument sign at the entrance like you could have otherwise under code. So we think we've met the intent, just in a slightly modified way.
Okay, let's see if there are any questions. I don't see any, thank you. We'll get back if we have more questions. Thanks. Okay, now, come on up, give your name and address for the record, please. And please speak to the applications in front of us.
Excuse me, my name is Susan Bodie. I live at 2750 Dupont, about half a block north of the Center Block of Elan, and I'm here -- I did receive the letter about this hearing. I'm here to speak in opposition to the variance for the signs because we, as a neighborhood, have welcomed Elan and all the other buildings into our residential core of our neighborhood. We consider the south side of the Greenway to be our mixed-use, commercial, et cetera, and those kinds of signs are, I think, appropriate there. But north of the Greenway is supposed to be purely residential, and that's what it's zoned. And because of that, we don't want the neighborhood to start taking on a commercial character. I took some pictures around the neighborhood, just to give an example. I'm not sure if this -- this is blue, which is south of the Greenway, and it's a commercial mixed-use residential. They have large signs, letters, but on that side of the -- we wouldn't object to it on the south side of the Greenway. This building is right adjacent to Elan's Center Block. There are two buildings. They just have very small signs with their address and the name of the building. These are old buildings. This one is also another old building. You can see the name and address above it. Some of the mid-century buildings, this one is a new sign. I think it's there to keep up with -- it's right next to -- it's the Fremont, right on 28th and Fremont. And here's what they had originally, just your address. And now they've added this sign, I think, because of the new construction. This building is at 28th and Dupont, just an address. Ms. Lansing had said that they needed these big signs in order so people could find the buildings, but I said the pizza guy finds my house with little three-inch numbers on it, so I don't think that's the case. Now Flux is a new building that's, you know, in the same -- this monument sign is facing the Greenway at the top of the ramp to the Greenway for bikes, and it's facing -- it's not facing into the neighborhood, it's facing away. And this is what's on the building, is their address and the name of the building above the door, which we think is much more appropriate. This new building on 28th and Lindale has no sign at all, it's just their address above each door. This is the only one that has a large monument sign, and that's tract 29, and we just feel it gives it a commercial feel. It does not feel residential. Those are just some examples. So I would urge you to not start a whole new trend that people who have new construction in the residential core of our neighborhood are going to make it look like the commercial section further south. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I don't see any. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on item 3 or 4? Anyone else for item 3 or 4? If not, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have -- we'll take them one at a time. Item 3 has just one application, the conditional use permit to allow signage. Do I have a motion on that? If not, I will move the staff recommendation. Can I have a second? Moved and seconded. There's any discussion on that? Yes, certainly. Commissioner Bender.
Could I clarify with staff? So if this had been submitted as part of the original PUD, it would have been approved because of the point system that we use to approve PUDs? Is that -- am I understanding correctly?
Correct. Signs are one of the exceptions that an applicant can seek through providing amenities.
But now, since they didn't do that, it's just going through our regular variance process?
No, this is not a variance. It's an amendment to the conditional use permit to amend the PUD, and the -- in the report, I go through the point structure. So it is -- yeah, the application is a CUP, it's not a variance.
Okay. So because it was referred to as a variance during the testimony, I just wanted to clarify. So this is a conditional use permit, and we use this point system as part of our PUD, and they have met the points that are required for this CUP?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Lipke-Pier.
I also have a question for staff. I'm Hillary. So are signs allowed in this anyway? Is it just the fact that it's not a monument sign? Is that why we're hearing this? Or is it just -- are they not allowed at all, and that's why we're hearing this?
No, they are. You cannot seek variances to signage in the residential districts. On page 2, though, I do, like the fifth paragraph down, I explain or write out what is allowed in the R5 zoning district. In this case, for a residential use over -- on a site over an acre, they're allowed, you know, one wall sign and one freestanding sign. And then if this was a corner lot, as Ms. Lansing had indicated, they could have two freestanding signs, but this is a through lot, not a corner lot, because the Greenway is not a corner, it's an interior side. So they are allowed signage, they're just needing some exceptions for the type and the number of signs.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments on the motion to accept the staff recommendation? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Slack, Lipke-Pier, Kronzer, Gusselman, Gagnon, Forney, Bender. So that is five to two.
Okay, that is approved. Let's do item number four. So I will move the staff recommendation to approve the application with two conditions. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, clerk, please call a roll.
Bender, Forney, Gagnon, Gusselman, Kronzer, Lipke-Pier, Slack. It's also five to two.
Okay, that is approved. Thank you very much. We move on now to item number seven. Carmel Plaza and Square, 2910 and through 2936 Pillsbury Avenue. Staff is Janelle Widmar. She'll give her report.
These properties are located just south of the Midtown Greenway and slightly north of Lake Street, off of -- between Pillsbury and Pleasant Avenue. The zoning is I-1. The existing uses on the site are a shopping center, and they're currently doing a third-floor addition to the Carmel Plaza building that was previously approved a couple years ago. So what they're proposing to do now is to do an expansion of that third-floor addition. So this would be on the Greenway side of the building, and it's basically extending out to the north wall of the second floor. They're also proposing to do a fourth-floor addition, and that is more U-shaped. Here, they're just building above the first -- or, excuse me, the third floor. And these -- both of these additions are intended to be used for offices, which are permitted uses in the I-1 district, and altogether, it's about 26,000 square feet. Then on the first floor of the building, they're proposing to expand their recycling area, and that would be this first-floor addition on the north side of the building. And finally, they're proposing to do a two-level parking structure, and this would be located over the existing surface parking at the center of the lot. This won't be changing circulation on the site. Cars currently enter from Pleasant and exit out onto Pillsbury. That will remain the same. All circulation will occur on-site. Carmel Square has been included with this application because the parking ramp extends over the lot line. This proposal will comply with all the zoning code, parking, and building bulk requirements. The only application we're looking at is site plan review. As they've gone through site plan review before, this is an amendment triggered by the proposed additions. I'll just jump to the issues that were outlined in the staff report, starting with the shadowing impacts. As I mentioned, the Midtown Greenway is located to the north of the site, and the proposed third and fourth-floor additions will add some -- or increase the shadowing to the Greenway. The -- just to orient you to what setbacks are proposed, as I mentioned, the third floor will align with the existing second-floor building wall, which is set back 40 feet from the Greenway. And then that fourth floor ends up being, let's see, most of it is set back at 53 feet, but towards the center of that section will extend to 40 feet as well. Overall, the building extends the full length of the block, which is 350 feet long. And again, the fourth floor steps in a little bit, and it's also a little bit narrower. That one is at 288 feet. The applicant has submitted some shadow studies. Based on the shadow studies, the increased shadowing impacts would primarily occur during the winter months, November through January. So, let's see, I don't know if they'll both -- they provided one showing what's currently allowed for this third-story addition that they're currently building, and then what the increase will be -- barely fit on there, with the proposed third and fourth-floor additions that you're looking at today. So if you look at the center one, for example, in December, it would currently extend to kind of the center of the trench of the Greenway, and then with the third and fourth-floor additions, it would extend further into that Greenway area. This site is located in the Midtown Greenway Land Use and Development Plan, and it does emphasize that retaining solar access to the Greenway is very important. And with this site being located on the south side of the Greenway, it definitely has more of a -- the potential to impact shadow -- or that solar access. It does call for having exposure to the sun for most of the day, so here again, it's during the winter months where this would become an issue. The plan goes on, just talk about some strategies for addressing the shadowing impacts, and one of those includes stepping back the mass of a building on the south side of the Greenway. So not just having a big, long wall, but if you can break up the massing, that is one way to reduce the shadowing. Back in 2010 and 2012, the Planning Commission had similar proposals before them with a third floor extending up to that existing second-floor wall. In what those proposals, they had a condition that that third floor be set back one structural bay or 20 feet, or approximately 20 feet, so that the shadow on the Greenway is no more than the current building. We have required greater setbacks for other developments on the south side of the Greenway. The Lime Apartments, which was actually, there was an RLS on tonight's agenda, so it was the first item on the agenda related to that project, but that was a six-story mixed-use building, where they're actually separated from the Greenway by 29th Street, but they stepped back their first floor, and we required them to step back their fifth and sixth floors further than what they were originally proposing. But all in all, the setbacks that were enforced for that building are greater than what's proposed now for the Carmel Plaza building. So when we looked at all of this, with the increased impact of shadowing, and then that there's a large building mass that is proposed, we recommended that the condition of approval to set back the third floor, at least one structural bay, stay in effect, and also that that fourth floor be set back 70 feet from the Greenway for not 50 -- less than 50 percent of that total building width. So I think for the third floor, that's pretty self-explanatory, but they're going to have to set this fourth floor back even further. It couldn't go out to that north existing wall. But they could do something like this where it'll break up the massing. The next issue that we looked at was, again, related to the Greenway and the small-area plan, and that is in regard to what is called a future public promenade, extending where we don't have 29th Street to ensure that there's pedestrian access on both sides of the Greenway. With that first-floor recycling addition, that would extend all the way up to the north lot line, which would prevent a promenade from going there in the future. We don't think right now is the appropriate time to have that. We have great issues and so forth, and there's no other segments of a promenade here at this time, so there's nothing for it to connect to, but we don't want to prevent that promenade from being established in the future. And the plan does call for retaining 12 feet there, so that was another condition that we're recommending, that the recycling area be set back at least 12 feet. It doesn't look like that it would be infeasible to do. It doesn't look like that it would be infeasible to do. There was a request for alternative compliance, again, related to the recycling area on the first floor. It's obviously not located within eight feet of any adjacent streets, that technically requires alternative compliance, but also there's no windows proposed in it and with this being a recycling area, it's not going to add any benefit for natural surveillance, so we are recommending alternative compliance for that part of the, or that addition. Then, on the, on the fourth floor addition, with the window requirements, they're deficient on a number of walls, so we didn't see any reason that it would be impractical to comply with that, so we are recommending that, that they comply with that. Then, looking at the roof lines, and this is proposed to have a flat roof and a pitched roof. It currently just has a flat roof and the proposal would be that the third story would continue to have a flat roof, but then the fourth floor would have a pitched roof and just looking at the context of the area, larger buildings in this area don't have a pitched roof. So to be consistent, we're recommending that the flat roof of any addition, or the roof of any addition be flat. Lastly, there was one other condition that's basically just stating that with all the other approvals, unless it's otherwise decided here by the planning commission, that those previous conditions will remain in effect. I know that there were some things about, and this is still a current requirement, but blocking up the windows, making sure that the windows stay open to allow visibility in and out of the building. So other than that, those were the main issues that we looked at and I can take any questions.
Okay, commissioners, are there any questions at this point? Commissioner Kronzer?
Thank you, President Tucker. Janelle, I have a couple of questions here. So on the fourth floor, the applicant's proposing office space, what were to happen to the parking ratios if that were to turn into retail space?
First of all, if they were proposing to do retail there, they would have to come back for an expansion of non-conforming use. Office is not part of a shopping center, it can be in allowed use on its own, so any retail expansion needs the expansion of non-conforming use, which would have to come here at a public hearing.
Okay, and is there a lighting plan included in the application?
There was not, so they will have to provide them.
Okay, and if, am I correct in understanding that there's chain link fence proposed to be on the north property line between this property and the Midtown Greenway, right-of-way?
That's existing.
It's existing.
For as long as I can remember, it's been there.
Okay. I guess it's a little bit in the weeds, but I think it's important to understand. So on sheet A110, they're proposing to use aluminum storefront glazing to fill in what's currently an outdoor space. Can you walk us through what's going on right there?
Here we go. So where, in which area are you referring to?
Basically, around the whole horseshoe, there's about a six or eight-foot space, which is currently, if I understand it, it's a roofed canopy, but it's open to the air and now it's being infilled with glazing to basically make it indoor space?
It has been enclosed and that was previously approved. So no additions to the shopping center are proposed as part of this, it's only office space that's being added on the upper levels.
Okay, because the drawing sheet does clearly say new aluminum storefront.
It does, but that is not accurate.
Is not correct.
So, yes, so they're only allowed to add.
Okay, and then following on that same area, maybe a site plan would be better. So between that existing glazing and the parking structures, a four-foot walkway and that's the circulation path for pedestrians?
Are you referring to the walkway along Carmel Square?
Between the parking structure and the existing building.
Okay.
The U shape. Yeah, in that area.
So right in here?
Yes.
So this will be the outline of the parking structure above, so there should be no interruption to that walkway?
So where are the pedestrians when they park in the structure, where in the building are they trying to get to?
So there is, let me find that floor plan again. First floor plan, there's an entrance here and there's an entrance here, so they'll still have access to that, the parking structure won't affect that. Of course, there's all the individual entrances.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my concern is that that parking structure is four feet away from this building. It seems very incompatible with some of the uses that are currently there, as being so tight to the structure. So, okay, I understand that. Do you have any elevations of the parking structure? I mean, what we see in these elevations are really just almost like the structural components to the parking structure?
I think these are the primary elevations, just what's shown on sheet A200.
Okay, so there's, so it's an open thing that has no screen of cars. It's basically a structural deck with some cabling. Is that exactly what the proposal is?
The building essentially acts as the screen to Pillsbury and Pleasant.
Hmm.
But it will extend above certain parts of it.
If you look at the section, upper left corner of the screen, you can see how far the parking structure extends past the building.
And there are, let's see here, we can see it, along, this one is Pleasant, these canopies that extend over the entrance and exit, so they do provide some screening there.
Some, okay. Okay, that's all, thanks.
Commissioners, any other questions of staff? Commissioner Lipke Pierre?
Yeah, I just, along the same, so if I was looking at the site plan, you're saying that the parking that we're seeing is actually above, or what's happening on the ground floor under the parking ramp?
That surface lot will remain.
So what Commissioner Kronzer was saying about a four-foot walkway, it is true, there will only be four feet between cars and the wall, is that what it is, or, because it looks very narrow?
Yeah, it's exactly four feet between the parking and the walls and that's the existing condition.
And are there, are there curbs or anything to keep cars from, you know, having, I mean, what's there now versus what's being proposed?
It's a six-inch raised sidewalk.
Okay.
So the sidewalk kind of acts as the curb.
So there's a bit of an, so if I was driving a car, my, the wheels would touch that, so in theory, the wheels will be four feet from the front of the building?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, if they over.
Overhang?
There's an overhang, yeah, I could shorten it.
Thanks.
Any other questions? I don't see any, thank you. At this time, I will open the public hearing, I'd like to hear from the applicant or representative of the applicant first. Particularly interested in your reaction to the suggested conditions and if you have more information about the, the look of the parking decks, that would be helpful and any changes that make the setback that we approved or as a condition earlier no longer applicable, maybe the inclination of the earth has changed or something?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, staff, thank you for your report. It's a great day today, they're living water in Tugazas Strip, which is a good thing, a good day to start, so my people could drink. This.
Your name and address, please.
Oh.
Ah, your name and address, for the record.
207 East Lake Street, Basim Sabri, the owner.
Thank you.
I'm going to address certain of the, certain questions that you have brought up, Mr. Chair, and I'll let the other staff talk about the other concerns. With regards to your concern, the first floor proximity from the cars is what it would be as it is, it would not change and there's plenty of pedestrian walking distance between the car and the building. As to the second and third floor, it would become to be 10 feet away from the building because the first floor overhang that Kronzer, excuse me if I did not pronounce your name wrong, I apologize. People call me many names, so I don't take it so personal. So the second floor and third will be a lot further in proximity to the, to the ramp. As to the screenings of it, I don't think there was a specific section showing the screening, I'll let the architect talk about it and answer that. My biggest thing is here today is to ask that this development be treated just like everybody else in the city and just be fair, treat us across the board like I asked Councilman Bender or anybody else, to treat us just like everybody else. This particular project serve a big community and it is the largest gathering space for the Somali community in the Twin Cities. The third floor in particular is approximately 65 to 70% unleasable space designated to the community. That's where the third floor is, okay? As to the fourth floor, it is smaller in relation to the third floor, to what we are asking for, is a setback because we wanted to accommodate the Greenway. I will not call it trench to be politically correct, Janelle, I'm sorry, I will call it the Greenway. So we are sitting back from the Greenway to accommodate the shadow. In terms of, Mr. Tucker, to what changed, I will let other people talk about that subject a little more and a little more accurate than me, though it was my idea, if you recall, at the spur of the moment, we made, somebody came in and said, there's a shadow comes in the Greenway and it was my suggestion on this, on the spot, let's back it up 20 feet and it passed by you commissioners or some of you who's here and some have changed. And since then, things changed. Then again, I'll let my friend Bob here address it and talk about it, he's more familiar with the technicality. The place receives zero public funds. The place, the addition is not asking for a variance, we have way more parking than we require. I'm spending about $1.7 million in creating parking because a lot of people, rightfully so, wants to have more parking, so, okay, we said, fine, let's create a parking space that will accommodate the parking at the site. So again, there's, there's a bunch of money being spent in there. The exterior of it is beautiful. I'm not so concerned about whether it's hip roof or a flat roof, I prefer if it is a hip roof because it resembles the, across the street, and I'm not really so good, from it, this is not a really good picture, which is Kitty Corner and across the street to the west is another property that have also hip roof, but it's not a make or break the deal. I prefer as a developer to make it into hip because I just like hip-looking roof, but it doesn't really matter whether it's a hip or not. I pretty much want to, again, thank you for taking the time to listen to us and I'm very happy that there's a lot of community people, some against, respectfully so, and there's some for it, but I see there's a lot of people supporting it. It is a community center more than a shopping place, it does serve a lot of families, kids, men and women, people who start in businesses. It is overall, beside a mall, it is a community, community center that is a big aspect and have a big impact to the community. I appreciate your listening, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to address them.
Thank you very much. Any questions? I don't see any. Does your architect here, going to?
Yes, I'm Scott Nelson with DJR Architecture.
Thank you.
And I'd like to just maybe address a couple of the conditions and perhaps if there's some questions. And again, Mr. Sabri has told us that when we first, we first designed it, we did it as a, as a predominantly flat roof building. It was when it was a two-story, it was when it was originally a three, we came up with a three-story, there was a blend of hip and flat and ultimately, I think there was a staff recommendation to do that as a, as a flat roof, so that's what we, we ended up doing. So that's what's currently permitted as a three-story with a flat roof building. The one that's proposed is kind of a blend of, of the hip roof, which is intended to tie into Carmel Village, which is Kitty Corner across the street. A lot of the residents, a lot of folks that live there work at Carmel Square, the two buildings are obviously owned by Sabri Properties and have similar stucco and window details. On the fourth floor, we actually stepped in, in, in three directions with the flat roof on the edges, so what you'd see from Pillsbury and Pleasant are flat and then, then the hip comes up and again, with the idea that it ties into Carmel Village. That said though, that's not, that's not a big deal, when we saw the conditions, Mr. Sabri said he'd be more than willing to go with the total flat roof, excuse me, and maybe we could do some steps similar to what was proposed for the third floor, so at your discretion, we'd be willing to do either one of those. The one thing I'd like to talk about a little bit is we did a much more detailed shadow study this time and I think, I think your report shows some of the results of the shadow. The differences on the fourth floor, if we went with a 412 flat roof versus a pier or a 412 sloped roof versus a pitch roof, will be very minimal. There will be some difference, but, but very minimal to what the shadow study is that we did. And I think if you can see that the, once we get into March, there's, there's virtually no difference between the two, the.
Do we have these drawings that you're looking at?
Yep, if you want to. I think the issue probably relates primarily to mid-November to, and I think Janelle had a slide in her report that showed the two back-to-back. But the proposed comes, and the trench itself is actually in shadow for a good part of that, of that month as well. And it just, it comes just a little bit past, and this is at the most extreme time of the year, just past the, this is again, this is with the fourth floor. And also say that one of the, one of the, one of the other conditions was a provision that the fourth floor be stepped back no more than 70 feet. In actuality, I think the number, I think it's intending that it lines up with the back existing structural bay, which would be exactly 68 feet, as opposed, we have been canceling the fourth floor out a little for, we'd be, no problem, we could move it back to 68 feet and that would actually help this by about six and a half feet. So it'd actually be a little bit better than what we're proposing.
The wording of the suggested condition is at least 70 feet, not, not no more than.
Right, but it has to, it has to line up with the back structural bay of the building and back, and the bays are set, the building's back 48 feet, the first structural bay where it was actually lining, lining up is 20 feet back from that, so it would actually end up being 68 feet.
So you're saying 68 feet is a more natural structural place to be in?
It has, it has to be, 70 would actually not be on a structural wall, so we'd like to clarify that that's a, a condition that we would like to have modified by those two feet. But the, the actual worst-case scenario shadow would be a little bit better than the one that our, our shadow study shows. And then, once we get to the, about the, towards the end of February, middle part of March, we're in, we're in June, we're, we're in much, we're in much better shape on the Greenway, it'll be, you know, in sun all of the time, so.
Okay, do you have any other comments on the suggested conditions?
No, we're in agreement, we're, the setback for the recycling.
And the windows, the windows you can handle?
The windows are fine, we need to, we're at like seven and a half, we have no problem adding more windows, we have no problem setting the.
Recycling?
Recycling center back to 12 feet for a promenade and the others are more, more regulatory.
Okay, let's see if there are other questions. Commissioner Lipke Pierre?
Yeah, I'm looking at drawing A130 really briefly and I'm looking at the addition to the third floor plan and I just had a quick question, is the added space, spaces being added to existing offices or are they new offices altogether?
They will be new office space, that, that part of the building is not leased, there's not an office plan. You're talking about this space?
Yeah, I'm asking, I guess, let me clarify, I'm asking whether the hatched area is going to be added onto the, the existing space or whether it's considered new offices apart from?
No, it's new space, it'll make the, it'll make the depth of the floor more typical, it's very narrow right now, the depth of the floor is. It's, it's harder to lay out a plan in that depth of floor. We're willing to do that for the fourth floor, because you know, it said that the fourth floor would actually line up where that is now, but it makes it harder to do.
I was just wondering, because it didn't, if it was new office space independent of the other, I didn't see any means of egress, so I wasn't.
They would be lined up, you know, sort of more typically and maybe even with the center corridor.
All right, and then, when I was looking at your roof plan, whether it's flat or hip, I think you have some problem with where your, your hips are meeting on the lower-left portion. left portion, so you might wanna just, if you end up getting a hip, you might wanna check that out, because it's not lining up quite right. And it's hard to tell, because your elevations don't sync up with that, that, when the hip returns and goes, goes south. And, and just one more question I had, because I was looking at your sun studies from June, and, and maybe it's just been a while since I've done sun studies, but it looks as though the sun is north of your building. Can you clarify if, is this, is this actually accurate?
Looking at this one?
Yeah, mhm.
Okay, the sun actually is, when, when it rises that early in the morning, on June twenty-first, it actually is quite a ways around.
Okay.
As, as when it sets, it's quite a ways around.
Well, I know it's so that, you know, it rises and it sets, and the less, but I know, I always, yes, I assumed in Minnesota, we're kinda north of the equator, you know, that we turn, I just wasn't sure if this was quite accurate, it looked a little bit extreme, but I thought I'd ask this for, to double check. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kronzer, question?
Just wanted to get back to the parking structure. Can you clarify the distances setback from the existing building, and what finishes or screening you're proposing?
It, it is setback just beyond the sidewalk, the existing sidewalk of the ramp, so it's about four feet, and it's, and it's completely open. It's a post-tension concrete with, with concrete columns, and it's intended to be as open as possible. So your, your, your point, or your question of, and, and again, the, the building does screen it on three sides primarily, but you will see, and your point is, is correct, the, the canopy that is here will block it about to here, but the top level of that will be in view from both sides, so we might wanna look at doing some treatment to that part of the, or that exposed part of the facade.
And what about the finish? Is it just proposed to be plain concrete?
Yeah, it's a very, very straightforward concrete parking ramp with cable railings and, and a support for cars.
Okay, any other questions, commissioners? Thank you very much. At this point, I'll open up the public hearing to anyone else who wishes to speak. How many people want to speak on, on this item? Okay, let's keep it brief, and also, please remember, what we have here is a site plan review. We want to hear comments about the, the, the way the building is set on the site, and the materials, and that, that sort of issues that were reported by staff. So I, I know there'll be a lot of support for this business existing and expanding, but the issue here is the site plan, so please try to keep your comments to the site plan. Okay, come on up, whoever wants to speak first, give us your name and address, please, and speak to the application before us.
Greetings, councilmember and commissioners. My name is Abdallah Salam. I live at five fifty-seven oh eight Jefferson Street, northeast, in Minneapolis, and also I'm the director of the mosque at Sincero Riverside Neighborhood Minneapolis. And why I'm here today is to speak as Carmel as a project and the value it is for the community. I do remember when this project started in nineteen ninety-nine, when it was an open warehouse, and just seeing the vision and what it has become. And I spend more of my time actually in that neighborhood than in any other place, and, you know, the, the sense of identity and the sense, the sense of community is something very important in the Somali community. So whenever we meet people, they're always talking about Carmel, whereas like the families, the religious community, the educational services, and Carmel, I think, is just a project that Minneapolis should be proud of, from, you know, where it started and where it is today, and the fact that today we're considering more expansion to make it more, you know, user-friendly. The parking issue is being addressed with this approval. So I wholeheartedly speak on behalf of the community and also for the city, the, the added value that Carmel has brought. It's not only here, it's even internationally. You know, Somalis from other states come to Carmel. On July twenty-eighth, when we had the Eid celebration, I was there that evening, just the number of young people who are just hanging there, drinking coffee, talking about the Eid, you know, purchasing the clothes. So again, having more services there and, you know, providing the, the addition, the additional space for third floor and fourth floor will really make this project be, as they say, you know, maker of, you know, of the Somali community in the United States. So I just want to emphasize that. I've been part of it from the beginning, I'm still proud of it, and I advocate for it all the time, and I think it should be something that everyone should be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else, come on up, give your name and address, just come to the podium, please, Give your name and address, and please speak about the application, which is a site plan review. Thank you.
My name is Hassan Muhammad. I'm one of the imams of Twin Cities centers, and my address is four seventy-six University Avenue West in St. Paul. I live in St. Paul, but this community serves me in two ways. That's why I wanna share with you why it's important, the commissioners, to look this positively and approved. Number one, the, the service community provided this center united the, the majority centers of ten centers in Twin Cities, served by the office which is located in this center. So you're attracting a large community in Twin Cities, Twin Cities to come and, and, and be proud when you approve this type of the project. And lastly, which is very important, we used to hear from you always when we see, when we hear about this type of the public hearing, you always approve when the, this type of the business serving, the new Americans, so to feel that in Minneapolis is home, home for all. So we need to continue this feeling that this is a place for all of us, and for not only new Americans and mainstream, but for everyone. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Someone else?
Hi, my name is Shukri Adam. My address is twenty-three sixty Jordan Avenue in Minnetonka, Minnesota five five three oh five. I'm going to speak about the office space on, I believe it's the fourth floor. I'm trying to separate the issues between what the landlord's issues are and what we want. That's prime real estate for people like me. We would like to rent the office spaces there, because that's where the customer base is. The issue of parking and concrete and the shadow, and all those are very important issues, and we understand your concerns about them, and I'm hoping you can work with the developer on finessing those issues, but for us, it's a, a confluence of agendas for all of us. We care about our economic interest, renting spaces over there, developing businesses, that's where the customers are. The issue of the parking looking really nice and the security and all of that, that's been addressed as far as the customers are concerned. And there's a lot of retail businesses, now it's time for the service businesses to be able to pick up on those office spaces, and there's a lot of people who are interested. I, I believe there are people that I know already, you know, are waiting for these places to be developed, so that they can locate their services there, especially in the winter, because it's a place where people park, shop, eat, and are able to, to purchase other services, you know, travel agencies, things like that, that are important to, to the community, and now moving in their insurance companies besides retail, so there's other second-tier businesses that are coming in. You know, I pocket the IDS, it's all concrete, I don't see very good finishes in the basement, it scratches my cow all the time, so I understand your issues, but we have to look at this in context. I know it might be, you know, that we're concerned about the developer, but I think the tenants are very empowered. I, I don't want you to feel that, you know, that Basim Sabri just does things on his own, and, and decides a lot of things on his own, because there's enough of a market push now that we're able to sit with him and discuss things if we have concerns about them. But it just takes too long. Every time things come to city council that we need, it just seems to take too long, and there's issues with finishing. The shadow issue, I use the greenway. I know a lot of people don't use the greenway in the community, but the shadow, I mean, it might not make sense to me, but if it's in the winter, we have to be able to balance between economic interests and the greenway. And I'm a proponent of biking and walking in green spaces, but there's also a critical massive development that we need to be able to balance, so that, you know, everybody gets something out of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much for speaking to the application. Someone else wishing to speak on this application for a site plan review? Come on up and give your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Barb Ludak. I live at twenty-nine thirty Blysdale Avenue, and we are directly across the street from the mall. And the biggest issue that we have is the traffic on Pillsbury is horrible. It's, you take your life into your hands to try to cross the street. There are so many children, they have a school bus stop on that corner, I've seen people almost getting hit. I have come within an inch of getting hit myself on that corner, and we have brought it and had to try to resolve it so many times. Sometimes it will take you twenty minutes to get from one end of the block to the other end of the block. It really has to be looked at from pedestrian and car traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Come on up, give your name and address, and speak about the site plan review.
First of all, good evening. The commissioner, thank you for your serfing the people all the time. When the issue for the Carmel Mall, I named it the Bees Village Carmel Mall, because when I come in, in America two thousand, the police, I was the beginning of my, living in America, in Minnesota, in Minneapolis, in that time, that, that area, the wars, it's the war is the police, and the gangs is police, that time. Now, everybody is now, that area is a peaceful area, a peaceful community, because the Carmel Mall is leading the people and the community, and neighbor also, to good directions. Also, we are the faith leader, and spiritual leader in Bees community and Bees village in Carmel Mall. Also, we promoting all the time the Bees and processing, because everybody is need Bees and security and safety. We need to exchange the Carmel Mall, we need big and that, and another braces, and thank you for your consideration. Salaam alayhi.
Thank you very much. Next person, your name and address, come on up.
Thank you so much. Thank you, commissioners. My name is Siaad Abdullahi, Dr. Siaad Abdullahi. I'm a healthcare entrepreneur. Good to see you, Lisa, Ms. Bender, congratulations on the baby, and on your elections as well. I'm going to speak briefly on the economic aspects of this project. Again, I'm not very cognizant or conversant with the specific particulars of the, of the architectural or design or issues. I want to briefly speak about the economic impact of this, this project. I'm an entrepreneur in the East African community, I'm a CEO of a company that employs over three hundred and fifty employees and about eight hundred independent contractors. Many of my employees patronize the Carmel Mall for various services. I do know that this addition will have a significant economic impact in terms of both tax dollars that rotate within this community. I'm in fact also a landowner myself on Pillsbury and thirtieth, Pleasant and thirtieth in the ward. Our businesses are going now in the, in the classic new American trend of gentrification and acculturation. We're not doing just cabs anymore. We're owners of, of medical facilities, so I want this to be seen in the light of a community that's also progressing and maturing in its, in its second phase as Minnesotans and as members of the Twin Cities community. So I would like, and obviously the specifics to the, to the extent that the developer needs to be, to work with you, I think that's something this commission is able to do. My input is to speak on the economic impact that this will have in terms of both tax contributions, and in terms also of a place that, what the other folks have said, in terms of a gathering space, with an economic value. It's a place where some unique services that I can't, my family can't find in Galeria or Southdale. My daughters go get henna there on Eid day, I can't get that at the Galeria. So it's really, it has, we have to look at the unique value proposition that this ethnic mall provides to folks, even folks that you might think have become mainstream, that have, live in the suburbs. People come from Maple Grove, Saint Cloud, to come to this facility. So it's not only just the folks who live in the ward alone, so I would like you to see it in that, in that light as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. How many more people wish to speak? Okay, three more. Your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Speeder, one twenty South Sixth Street, Minneapolis five five four oh two. I'm the attorney for Sabri Properties. I'm just gonna briefly address somewhat in summary fashion what we're talking about here today. And part of a number of the speakers that may have not looked like they were talking specifically about this site plan, in, in essence, they are, because what they're saying here is that this is a phenomenally successful business incubator. I mean, this is without any public dollars. It's an amazing thing that's happened. When he first told me about this, I've known Mr. Sabri thirty years, I said, you're nuts to, to take this on. And this has been incredibly successful in an area that was very, very rundown. This project evolves, and when we were here four years ago, in an ad hoc fashion, and this is how we got stuck where we are about the setback, we just agreed, we said, well, there was some, some mention about the shadow study. We just, on the seat of the pants, said, well, we'll set it back one bay. And I think it was actually me who said it to Mr. Sabri, if I recall correctly, and he said, fine, let's do it. We didn't have a study, we didn't look at it, we didn't think it through fully, and we didn't see at that time the full, the necessity for this expansion. And part of the reason for the expansion, especially on the third floor, as Commissioner, as you had asked, what's it gonna be used for? A lot of it's gonna be used to make the mosque bigger, that's planned for the third floor, and the other ancillary uses for the mosque. This isn't for extra, most of this is just community space, and on the third floor, that we need that extra twenty feet. And now that we've looked at the shadowing, and we've had some other developments over the last four years, in other words, a lot of new buildings on the south side of the greenway, we see that we have a precedent, and a precedent that we have gotten is that shadowing hasn't been a concern for other buildings. So for example, we have Lagoon at twenty-nine thirty, and that is, that is significant. That building is much higher, it's, I think it's about nine stories, closer to the greenway, so there wasn't, that was allowed. Twenty-nine oh four Lindale, now while there are setbacks there, note that the setbacks are on floors higher than this building will even be. Twenty-nine hundred Thomas, that's taller and closer to the greenway. So we have examples that, of other buildings that are already closer to the greenway, or taller, or both. And so I think we have that new knowledge, plus we have the shadow study that shows, certainly in the six summer, or the six warm months, there is no effect. And even on the coldest day, the greenway itself, since it's below grade, shadows itself. So the building just at most adds a shadow upon a shadow. And so I think, from that look, it's not, the concern isn't what we thought it was in the ad hoc suggestion that I stupidly made. Now, the other thing, just, Mr. Sabri has indicated he's okay with a non-hip roof, but that is a better picture for Carmel Plaza, which is Kitty Corner from this project, that has a hip roof. It makes sense for these buildings, the same owner, the same customers, to have a similar look, and I, and that has a blend, this would have a blend, and I think architecturally, it just makes sense. It looks better. I should also note that I should also note that the, um, actually I think I've hit all my issues. So is there any questions?
I don't see any. Thank you very much.
Thank you much, appreciate it.
Thank you for speaking to the application. I certainly appreciate that. Okay, two more here. Your name and address for the record, please?
Zachary Matwier, 2848 Pleasant Avenue South, Minneapolis, Minnesota. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, wear many hats in the community, sit on many boards, participate in many organizations in South Minneapolis, North Minneapolis, and St. Paul area as well. But today I want to speak on behalf of friendship, uh, friendship that I have developed in community work with many of the leaders and people of the Somali community, and I'm not ashamed to say a friend of Mr. Sabri. What I want to speak to is the issues. There's a lot of work that's went into this. On occasion, Mr. Sabri has consulted with me on the work that he was doing with the, the city staff to try to get resolution to get this all done. Somewhere between 45 to 65% of the third floor is donated space for the community. I admire Mr. Sabri for doing that. However, I think that there's also some economic issues that come into play when you donate that much space of one of your buildings. Therefore, he hasn't said anything to me personally about it, but I do see a need for a fourth floor to kind of offset the cost of the donation of the community space. What I'm asking is that you respect and admire the diligent work of the developer in this issue and the city staff. Mr. Sabri is not an easy guy to work with, and neither is city staff. But somehow, those two entities came together and worked together and came up with this plan, which is before you right now. So I ask that you respect the recommendation of the city staff. Thank you.
Thank you. And one last speaker, please. Two last speakers? Okay, briefly, please. We've already heard plenty about the economic importance of this project, some about the shadowing, uh, so we don't need to repeat that information.
Okay, good evening, uh, Chairman and Commissioner. I think I'm the last person, but nonetheless, commenting on it, uh, regarding for this project. My name is Bashir, and I live 1020 West Madison Lake, Drive Blimath, Minnesota, 5540, uh, 55441. And I do have an office in this, uh, building, and as a professional accountant. And today I'm here to testify, uh, as the, on behalf of the tenant and myself, uh, this project, uh, actually, it is very, very important and sincere for the community and also the business owners. And, um, I could say it's not only for a mall, maybe a lot of people, they just understand as a mall, but it's also a community gathering. And, uh, it's a world, the old Somali communities, they can find everything's for semblance, whether it's henna, whether it's insurance, whether it's accounting, whether it's a restaurant, whether it's a traditional clothes, whether it's a mosque, whether it's anything they can get in one place, one shopping. And actually, that reduces the traffic and also the pollution of going in other places. So it is very, very important. And again, on behalf of the tenants and myself, we sincerely supporting and we requesting for the Commissioner to look the perspective of the tenants, over the 30% of the most Somali people live around there, they shop over there and they live around there. And it's not only the mall for this, it's also a mall for other estates from Seattle or any other places. Thank you very much, and I requesting sincerely to be considered.
Thank you very much. Okay, one, this is the last one. Two minutes, speaking to the application, of course.
Thank you Commissioners, my name is Marion Bean, Executive Director for the Woody Alliance. Um, we are, um, happy about the setbacks, thank you, that should protect the Greenway. Um, and the one thing, um, that I would like to say is that the, um, the Carmel Mall is an asset to the neighborhood, it's an asset to the city of Minneapolis, and we are glad that it is successful for the Somali community. Um, with that success though, has come some, um, pinching with the traffic and parking. And so I ask you to take a really critical look at what is being proposed, um, for traffic management and for the parking counts. Um, the way the, uh, the Carmel Mall will be used, will have some added intensity as a gathering center. So, um, there will be some additional stresses. And, uh, north of 29th Street, it's, it's, uh, residential, and it adds more burden to those streets and for parking, et cetera. Finally, as, uh, this project progresses, if you could take a look at both the conditions that were previously applied and make sure that they're, uh, completed, as well as take a look at the safety issues as the project is being built, possibly some scaffolding around the perimeter of the building, uh, to protect pedestrians or, um, some other uh, safety issues, just to protect the, um, people who are in the Carmel Mall as well as, uh, people surrounding it. And then the safety issue, um, uh, emergency vehicles for the, how, I guess I just have a question about how emergency vehicles will access the inside court if there's a need for emergency vehicles, if there's a parking ramp in there. And that's just a question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? I see none. Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing. I think we've had a thorough discussion of the importance of this project to a community, and also about the shadowing and its impact on the midtown Greenway. Commissioners, we have just one item. Staff suggests approval with one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight conditions. Uh, may I have a motion? Yes. Kyrish Giselman?
I just had a question for staff.
Certainly.
Um, the question I had, Janelle, was related to a couple of things the applicant mentioned about two of the conditions. One, the applicant, um, I think it was the applicant's architect, uh, just had a comment about, um, condition number three, the setback being instead of 70 feet, being at least 68 feet. I was wondering if you could speak to that. And then also, um, I was just wondering if you could speak to the, I think it was the applicant himself, he had comments about, um, the flat roof being a hip roof, just to kind of more mesh in with what is already existing in other structures, kitty corner right in the area.
Um, for the 68 feet, it does make sense to align it with the existing structural base, so, um, that, that's a reasonable approach, I, I think. Um, for the roof, um, I guess when staff looked at that and analyzed it, um, we weren't looking at residential properties, because north of the Greenway, that's primarily the use is located, there are residential properties. But for non-residential properties, which are primarily south of the Greenway, those usually have flat roofs. Um, so to fit in with that commercial context, that's where our recommendation came from. Um, but yes, there are pitch roofs and flat roofs in this area.
Commissioner Slack?
I also have a question for staff. Um, as part of the travel demand management plan, uh, there's recommendations. How do we ensure as a city that those are enforced?
Uh, generally, we don't enforce travel demand management plans. Um, they're, um, more of just an analysis. So, um, was there something in particular from the TDMP that?
Well, I, I think specifically, uh, when you read through it, uh, it seems like a lot of the issues are related to, um, double parking of cars, uh, obviously there's, there's an increased volume, but double parking of cars and, uh, ensuring that access is, is free flowing and that automobiles aren't being stopped. And so I think one of the recommendations in there was that, uh, the landowner, property owner would be providing an attendant. Uh, it doesn't specify, uh, when the attendant would be, um, you know, on duty, uh, for what types of events, hours, uh, but it seems like it's a, it's, uh, something good that would potentially keep that free flowing movement and preventing the double parking, which it sounds like that's one of the big issues related to, uh, circulation in and around, uh, the building.
And measures called for in a TDMP again are something that the, um, owner is volunteering to do. Um, it, it's not really zoning related. Um, I don't know if Jason would have more to add to that, but, um, I mean, we could certainly encourage them to abide by what has been drafted in the TDMP, but as far as enforcement authority, we have less of that. This is more of a voluntary, um, study.
Mr. Wittenberg?
Commissioners, if I can just, uh, follow up on that and clarify, I mean, that the applicant does sign what's essentially a contract between the city, uh, and themselves, agreeing to implement the measures in the TDM plan. Um, I, I think the primary enforcement that happens is that TDM plans are actually audited, periodically, um, but is somebody out there on a daily basis making sure every measure's getting enforced, uh, implemented? No, that's, that, that doesn't happen. But there is an auditing that, that takes place.
Okay. Um, other questions? I'd like to get along with, uh, Kyrish Forney.
Enlighten us what those might be and what the status of that is?
Uh, yes, Ms. Bean emailed me this morning, she said that the windows, um, facing the street again are blocked up. Whenever we get an application, um, before we can deem it for completeness, we do send an inspector out to make sure that they're in compliance with those previous approvals. So at that time, they were in compliance. Um, and it's, that's happened forward, they filled back up again. So at this point, it's more complaint driven, but, you know, it, and they are always required to maintain, maintain compliance, but now we have a clock ticking. So we do have to make, uh, a decision on these applications.
Mr. Kronzer?
Thank you very much. Janelle, how as a planning commission can we influence the TDMP before it's finalized?
Good question. Um, you know, this is still a draft, and I'm not sure, um, the status of Public Works Review on this, if they have comments yet. Um, so if there was something you could direct us to, um, take a look at something else if you had concerns, we could consider that.
Okay, Commissioners, other questions? Uh, I would like a motion, if, I, I will, Kyrish Giselman?
Um, I would have moved, I would move for the approval of the site plan subject to the staff's recommended A conditions, with the exception that, uh, number three be amended to a setback of at least 68 feet instead of 70 feet.
Okay, that's moved and seconded, staff recommendation with a small change from 70 to 68 feet. Uh, Mr. Kronzer?
Yes, um, I have a couple of added, uh, conditions if they'll be allowed.
Sure. Um, it's moved and seconded, we can, we can add some conditions, consider them.
Okay, so my, my concerns really are how this project faces the public spaces. It's not about necessarily the internal circulation or the, the aesthetics of, of the project, but how it faces the public streets. So, um, with, with those thoughts in mind, um, I'd like to add a condition number nine, that all on, uh, excuse me, all lighting on-site, building mounted or pole mounted, be full cutoff fixtures. Number 10, that the parking structure itself shall be designed with knee walls to block all headlights from vehicles traveling through and parked in the parking structure on all levels on the southeast and west sides, and that the finish of the structure shall not be plain concrete or painted concrete. And number 11, that all, I'm sorry, that new chain link fence not be allowed on-site.
Second.
Okay, uh, moved and seconded, three new conditions about lighting, uh, the parking structure with knee walls, and finally, about chain link fences. Do you have that, uh, written that we can give to staff, just to make sure we have your wording?
Scribbled.
Scribbled, scribbled is good.
I can rewrite it.
Okay, thank you. Um, any discussion on those three? Uh, Commissioner Giselman, you, do, did you want to be recognized? No? Okay, any discussion on those three? Uh, seeing none, I will, uh, ask all in favor of adding those three conditions, say aye?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, now the main motion has 11 conditions. Uh, other discussion on the main motion to approve the site plan with conditions? Mr. Bender?
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm not an architect, um, but I'm still concerned about the appearance of this parking garage. I can't imagine us allowing an open parking structure in most of the buildings that we see. And so I, I mean, I would add another condition, um, that would require screening of the parking garage. I don't know how that interacts with the extreme closeness of the structure to the building. And so I don't know if someone else up here with more expertise in architecture can help me with that, otherwise I would make an attempt at a motion myself.
Okay, uh, screening as seen from the shopping center or?
From the public facing streets.
Okay, I will certainly, you could have a, a, uh, motion to have applicant work with staff to screen the, uh, parking ramp from public view.
That sounds fine.
Oh, I did a good job there. Okay, you got that one, Jason? Okay, that's a condition number 12 about screening the, the parking structure. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, our main motion now has 12 conditions. Uh, any further discussion on the main motion to approve the site plan?
Amendment of why hip roof is something we would not want.
Well, generally, we try to match buildings to the, you know, like with like, so if commercial buildings tend to have flat roofs in an area, we continue with that flat roof.
Even though the one adjacent is a hip roof.
That is correct. Other discussion? If not, I will close the discussion and ask the clerk to call a roll on the motion to approve with the 12 conditions we've discussed.
Bender?
Aye.
Forney?
Aye.
Egnan?
Aye.
Giselman?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lipkupier?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
That is 7-0.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes our business with number seven. We will now move to item number 11, Theater Garage and Marquee Apartments, 2004 to 2018 Lindale. Uh, we'll first hear the staff report from Mailing Anderson. No? Oh, I'm, oh, nine, I'm sorry, yes, you, you are, you are correct. Uh, let's, let's do nine.
Um, there are seven applications before you tonight for the properties at 1013 Franklin and 1021 Franklin Avenue East. Uh, for, the first application is a conditional use permit to allow a reception or meeting hall in the C2 Neighborhood Corridor Commercial District. Uh, next is a variance of the rear yard requirement from seven feet to zero feet. Next, a variance to reduce the minimum off-street parking requirement from 70 spaces to six spaces. And then there are four variances associated with the proposed sign for the building. Uh, one is to increase the maximum height of a sign from 28 feet to 39 feet. One is to increase the extension of a projecting sign from four feet to approximately six feet. Another is to increase the maximum area per projecting sign from 20 square feet to 130 square feet. And finally, a variance to increase the maximum size allocation of signs from 101 square feet to 130 square feet. Uh, so just a little background on the property, the subject property contains two parcels, as I said, 1013 and 1021 Franklin Avenue East. Um, the existing building is located on the 1021 Franklin Avenue East parcel, and then an adjacent park, parking lot is located at 1013. Um, the building at 1021 East Franklin Avenue was constructed in 1916 as a silent movie theater. These are the original blueprints for the theater. Um, and it remained a movie theater for over 60 years. In the 1970s, it was converted to an adult film theater, and at that time, the building's facade was covered, and the building looks like this from about the 70s to the 1990s. Um, in the late 1990s, the building was converted into the Franklin Artworks. The facade was removed from the building, um, the false facade was removed from the building, uh, revealing its historic appearance again. So this is what it looks like now, let me zoom out. And at that time, um, the building was used as a art gallery with flexible theater and performance space, and Franklin Artworks closed, uh, last year, and the current owners purchased the building and its adjacent parking lot early this year. So the So the current owner is proposing to renovate the building for use as a private event venue, which is classified in the zoning code as a reception or meeting hall. This is a conditional use in the C2 district and requires a conditional use permit. Also, the applicant is proposing to construct a 645-square-foot, one-story addition to the rear of the building to be used for storage. And finally, the applicant is proposing to install a 130-square-foot double-face illuminated projecting sign. The sign is intended to recreate the character of a historic theater sign in reference to the building's original use. So I'm going to go through the applicant's, our applications as they are in the staff report. So first, I'll address the conditional use permit. As you'll see in the staff findings on pages 12, or two to seven, staff finds that the use of the property as a reception or meeting hall would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of the surrounding area. The use of the property as a reception or meeting hall is found to be consistent with policies from a comprehensive plan, which support commercial uses along commercial corridors such as Franklin Avenue. The adjacent parking lot will be brought up to the city's parking area, design and maintenance standards, as part of the conditional use permit. So staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit subject to the four conditions listed in the staff report. Next, I'll go to the rear yard variance. So the applicant is also asking for a variance of their rear yard requirement to allow for a one-story storage addition, which you can see in this elevation. It would be faced in brick to match the building. And typically, commercial uses do not have yard requirements. However, this block has no alley separating the commercial uses from the residential uses to the south. So they have a seven-foot yard requirement. And then if you look at the survey for the building, the property, the existing building is located eight feet from the property line. So they are proposing to fill in that space with the one-story storage addition. There's, here's a photo of what that space behind the building looks like right now. So there's about a 10-foot concrete block wall that separates the parking area from the kind of empty space behind the building. And then there's about a four-foot or six-foot concrete retaining wall topped by a four-foot chain-link fence. So essentially, the storage addition would fill in this entire space. The applicant has stated that that hidden area creates a space for people to hide and sleep and paint graffiti. And staff is supportive of the variance, believing that it would improve the existing condition. Staff was recommending that the applicant consider a roof design that discourages people from jumping on top of the roof, essentially. Also necessary for this proposal is a variance of the off-street parking requirement. So per the zoning code, a reception or meeting hall's parking requirement is equal to 30% of the capacity of the people in the building. So the building's capacity is 450 people. That means that its parking requirement is 135 spaces. However, 65 of those spaces are considered grandfathered from the previous uses of an art gallery and theater, so four spaces for the art gallery and 61 spaces for the theater space. So the remaining parking requirement for this use is 70 spaces. They do have an adjacent parking lot, as I mentioned. However, that adjacent parking lot only has space for six striped spaces that would meet our minimum requirements for aisle widths and size of the space. The applicant is proposing to actually meet that 70-space requirement by utilizing valet parking off-site. And the zoning code specifies that only hotels, restaurants, and theaters can count valet parking towards their off-street parking requirement. So that means that this use, a reception or meeting hall, cannot count that valet parking towards their parking requirement. So therefore, they need a variance. The applicant will, has stated that they will be able to fit 25 spaces on their adjacent lot when valet cars are parked because they stack them and they don't need aisles. And then they're proposing to, they have, what I wanted to note, so in your packet, there was an intent-to-lease space about 300 feet from the site for that valet parking, and that was actually incorrect. And I've provided the updated map and updated intent-to-lease document. So the parcels that they're intending to lease are from the Norway House, which is just one block over. So it's three separate parcels. So they would be meeting, they would have 45 additional spaces in order to meet that 70-space requirement, but they'd be using valet parking, so it still needs a variance. Let's see. So we wanted to bring that to your attention, but in our analysis, we noted this only as a proposed location, understanding that a fully executed lease had not been completed. Therefore, we recommend as a condition of approval that the minimum parking requirement of 70 spaces must be met through valet parking and/or a shared parking agreement, which would have to be approved by the city prior to the property owner being able to obtain their building permits or any other licenses from the city. Staff found that there are practical difficulties in meeting the off-street parking requirement of 70 spaces considering the size of the adjacent lot. The applicant is proposing to meet that space with valet, and staff believes it's reasonable to utilize valet parking to meet their minimum parking requirement as a restaurant, theater, or hotel would be able to. Therefore, we are supportive of that variance with the recommended conditions of approval. Staff is also recommending another condition, that six bicycle parking spaces be provided in order to alleviate some of the need for the parking. And finally, I'll get to the sign, which has four variances which I'll discuss together. So it's a double-face illuminated projecting sign, as I said, which is intended to recreate the character of a historic theater sign. And so, as you've read in the staff report, staff is recommending approval of two of the variances, approval of one of the variances with conditions, and denial of the final variance. Staff found that practical difficulties did exist in complying with the ordinance and trying to achieve the character of a historic theater sign. Staff found that the increase in height and projection of a projecting sign would not lead to an increase in sign clutter and would be in character with a historic theater building. However, the maximum size allocation of signs on this building is 101 square feet. The applicant is proposing a 130-square-foot sign. Staff is recommending denial of that variance as we believe it is still reasonable to achieve the character of the historic theater sign and have adequate signage for the building while also meeting that provision in the zoning code. Sign regulations are established to allow effective signage while minimizing visual clutter and minimize the adverse effects on nearby properties. All commercial uses, except those in the C3S, are limited to 1 1/2 square feet of signage for each one foot of linear building wall. Staff found that allowing an increase in this maximum size allocation of signs would lead to an increase in sign clutter. Therefore, we're recommending denial. There's another provision that states that projecting signs can only be 20 square feet in size. And then staff is recommending approval of that variance with the condition that the sign be kept to 101 square feet to be in conformance with that other, with the maximum size allocation of signs. And I also wanted to point out that the applicant is amenable to the conditions of approval. Staff did receive an email from the Ventura Village Neighborhood Group this morning, which is included in your packets, which had a number of questions that I've tried to answer through my presentation. But I also want to note that the neighborhood group was, wanted additional time for the applicant to come present at their meeting. And I wanted to let you know that the Ward 6 office has copies of emails from the applicant to the neighborhood group, asking him to be placed on the agenda for the July meeting. And so we believe that practical effort has been made by the applicant to try to present to the neighborhood, which is not a requirement of land use application, just the notification is. So I'll close there and take any questions.
Commissioners, any questions on this staff report? Commissioner Gisselman?
I just had a few questions regarding the parking. So when you referred to a shared parking agreement arranged with the city in the future, that would be if they were sharing parking with a nearby church or something like that?
Yes.
Okay. And then you also mentioned that the, I guess, the exception that's being sought is something that would be typical for theaters, hotels, and restaurants?
Right.
And so that the precedent really is that we've allowed that in those situations in the past?
Yeah, it's specifically written into the zoning code that restaurants, hotels, and theaters may use valet parking as, towards their parking requirement.
All right. And then last, I was just curious about the requirement that there's valet parking. So does that requirement, does that requirement exist? Is it in play for any event that occurs at this venue, or does the event have to be of a certain size?
We didn't specify to a certain size. The applicant has stated that valet use will be mandatory for all their events. So we're saying valet parking should be used for all events.
And just regarding mandatory use, is there a mechanism to enforce that?
I would have to have the applicant speak to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Lippke-Pier?
Yeah, actually, I just had a real quick question. Do you have a really thorough history of the building? I was just curious if you knew the original architects were in 1916.
Um, I think it might be on the blueprint.
I think that the sheet we have showing precedent for the signage appears to be Lee, Murray, and Kaplan. So I was just curious if it was the same or different.
You mean this blueprint?
No. Well, I'm curious for that building, but this is what we have in our packet.
Oh, that's not, that's not for this building, so, but that's what they used for the design.
Right.
To match.
Right. I just was curious if it was the same, so.
Um, I don't, not sure.
Other questions? If not, thank you very much for your report.
Thanks.
We will now open the public hearing. I'd like to hear from the applicant first, if possible, or a representative.
I'm Scott Nelson from DGR. And this is a project that our office has literally been working on since I started with them in 1986. Our office was originally literally right across the street from, from the Franklin Theater, which looked a lot like the photograph that, that staff had. We did, we worked for a number of different organizations to try and get that project going through the years before the artworks came through and became a gallery. And it was, it was always somewhat underutilized. So it's really, it's really gratifying to have First and First come in and, and take this building and kind of complete the renovation. And we're doing some additions to the mezzanine to make it a really viable, functional meeting space for the Phillips community. So that said, the couple of comments that were related architecturally, the concern about the rear roof coming up against the, the addition coming up against the ground, I think because there's a little offset, there's actually a raised, the land behind it is actually raised. We might be looking at raising the parapet and the roof a little bit in order to make sure no one can climb up there. But it's really more of a safety thing. We need the storage. We need, we want to block that area off because it's a, it's not, it's a place where bad things can happen. We're expanding and using the courtyard area between the PPL building to the east in our building for a little kind of outdoor gathering space as part of the events, but it won't, it won't be used on the south side. We need the storage. Melissa Gorman's here from First and First. If you have any questions specific to how they're going to meet the parking requirements. But other than that, if there's anything else I can...
Commissioner Kronzer?
Quick question. Can you quickly walk over the facade improvements? Are you proposing to kind of infill where the, what are called missing bricks are, where the cornice was in those two vertical bands?
Yeah, there's a bunch of repair work on, on the front of the building. And with the work, the upper level was basically the projection area. And it's never, in all of the renovations, virtually no work was ever done in there at all. So we're proposing to kind of clean all of that out, renovate it, and then it'll become kind of a two-tiered sort of pre and post-event party that's open to the floor below. So yes, we're looking at replacing this.
But as far as the facade, the bricks on the facade?
Yep, there's, there's going to be some brick repair.
Okay, because your elevation's kind of showing that's all cleaned up, just one of the shots. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I don't see any. Thank you very much. We'll just open the public hearing to anyone else who wants to speak. Come on up. Again, my apologies for skipping by your, your item. Please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Thor Adam. 2122 Elliott Avenue. Also, so the resident of Ventura Village and the chair. One reason, and they stated that the email was requesting time, I just reread it, it was saying they looked forward to meeting us at the July meeting. So just a little discrepancy or misunderstanding on those. The reason why we asked for postponed is that we have, we understand the dynamics that happen with these things. And, and I'm glad they addressed with the addition on the back, keeping people from crawling up because that's an important, important step for it. One of the bigger, biggest concerns, and we keep, and it comes up from time to time with, is parking. The Village Market is also in Ventura Village. Parking from that goes all the way down to Franklin. And actually, the parking lot that's shared by First and First, the restaurant that is there, he has people who park in his restaurant and walk down to the Village Market. So you have a four-block infiltration from another business. When you look at the grandfathered spaces, the total amount of spaces was 135. So 65 of those spaces then are being met by what's not available on the street. So we, you already have a, an issue with on-street parking that's not being solved. The valet parking, what we just, I think we, that's a wonderful option. What, they have an intent to discuss. There isn't an intent. The lease has not been executed, and just talking with Norway House. So another, another issue is just really wanting to make sure, although it's a good, a good solution, wanting to make sure that the pieces are in place. I think to sum up with a project like this, Ventura Village is very excited about this type of development coming. And we just want to make sure that as we go through each step, it's done well, it's successful, and it's a long-term project. And so just want to make sure that it, it's done in a timely manner. And again, back to the parking, that really will make or break some of these things. And really love to see those questions answered more concretely than abstract. Thank you.
Are there any other issues that you expect would come up at the public meeting?
I, some of the, I mean, I, we submitted a list of questions, and, and there's always, whenever you come to a housing and land use meeting, there are always many questions that arise and kind of little critiques. One example that we've had is the Baraka daycare came, and we just could address certain issues, lighting, different things that come up to make a safer, again, more successful thing. So as, as individuals can come to us with questions, there are many, there's, there's a whole list of things that we generally talk about.
Thank you. Questions from other commissioners? I don't see any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think I'm probably going to be the last of this group. My name's Mary Watson, 42-year homeowner resident of this neighborhood. And I was one of the original founders of Ventura Village, which used to be part of Phillips. And I've been the accountant for Ventura Village for 15 years.
Now, could we have an address, too, please?
Sure. 1815 13th Avenue South. The neighborhood, back when it was people of Phillips, had put a lot of dollars into this building because they wanted it to be a youth center. That didn't work. Then the dollars ended up coming back to the neighborhood when it was sold because there was some sort of a mortgage. Then we put more dollars into it. We turned around and put dollars into fixing it up, making it look the way it does now, the facade, the windows. And now that it's sold again, some of those dollars have come back to the neighborhood a second time. So we're really anxious to have it work, and we really want this to be successful. But the biggest problem we have is parking. And as Thor mentioned, the Somali market, which is called the Village Market, is just four blocks away. And we have the same issues with that market as they do in Whittier with Carmel Square. So parking is a huge issue. And we have someone here from Norway House who said, even though they have been approached about doing the valet parking in their lot, there is no agreement at this point. So that's a very big, big issue for us, that there isn't going to be enough parking. The second thing that I would like to ask is if there's anything in this site plan about fencing their parking lot. Because there are two businesses on Franklin Avenue to the west of the theater, and those businesses have people who use the theater's parking lot all the time. One is like a, like a place where you can go in and cash your paychecks and then wire money. And so people are in and out of there all the time. And the other is a corner grocery store. So I think that the, that the theater needs to fence their lot if they're going to make it a valet parking lot where they stack cars, because other people will be coming in there and parking to use those other businesses. And right now, it's just open with sort of an alley that goes around it. I see some of you looking at your plans. Maybe you want to just look at how that works. So I would hope there would be some recommendation from you to fence their l-... So I would hope there would be some recommendation from you to fence their, their parking lot if it's going to be for valet only and they're going to stack cars in there. The other thing is, it's really important in a neighborhood like ours to have the neighborhood support the project from the beginning in order to make it successful. And that's why we're asking that you, you postpone your decision until the new owners can come to us, do a presentation, have their parking plan in place, signed with Norway House or whoever. Maybe there's parking in the parking lot from the bakery, which is across the street the other way. I don't know. The bakery closes in the evening. They have parking places behind that. Perhaps they would be willing to work with them. But I would like to see that in place before you make a decision for the conditional use permits. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I don't see any. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this?
Hi, I'm Melissa Gorman with First and First, and we, we have, I know we've missed Thor, and I have been trying to communicate to come in and to speak, and I, I believe I'm on the schedule for later on in August, but I'm not sure quite yet. Maybe that's not true, but just wanted to speak a little bit on some of the points that were raised. We do have a letter of intent. While I don't have a completed lease with the Norway House, we have a letter of intent that's signed. That was, we had an original one that I believe Lisa Steiner referenced that had the incorrect premise addresses. So we got an updated one signed as, as recent as today. So I have that, and I believe that it's included. So it's our intent to move forward into a lease with that, and I understand that's part of the conditions of our parking. If for some reason that does not work, we have reached out to numerous businesses in the four or five-block radius, and have had a lot of support because our parking need really comes around evenings and weekends. Typically, it's after 5:00, a Thursday, Friday, Saturday is traditionally when our events are. So we've found that there's a lot of businesses that have been willing to partner with us in using their parking during their under, or unutilized parking times. The reason why we, we secured this letter of intent with Norway House was that the other parking lots were a little smaller, so it would have been more of a piecemeal, which we're happy to do, and our, our valet parking company has done in many other instances, but this just seemed like the, the easiest solution. But if for some reason this doesn't come to fruition, we're happy to reach out to these other people who have expressed interest in supporting our parking needs and securing a lease with them. We're confident that we're able to do so. We, we're not new, new to this business. We have an event center downtown called Aria on First Avenue and First Street in the North Loop area, and we partner with Uptown Valet at that space as well, and they've been, the event space there is about three to four times the occupancy of the Franklin, and they have always been very successful in securing parking, even during the All-Star Games, which is a great feat. So we're confident that we are going to be successful in securing parking and keeping it off the streets, keeping it out of the neighborhoods, and keeping it in designated parking lots.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I just had one response about the architect of our building. It says on this blueprint, it's Lindstrom and Almers. Were the original architects.
Thank you for that historic information.
Commissioner Tucker, I did, I did just have one follow-up question, Ms. It just, again, it just pertains to the valet parking. Obviously, it, it sounds like your plan is to make it available, but there's, I mean, there, there isn't really a mechanism to, to ensure that all attendees actually valet their cars, correct?
Well, we actually have leases that we secure with each individual, so I don't know from a city how, how the city can keep us doing it, but for, for us, we do secure leases with each of our clients, and that can be just part of our lease term. We've done it in the past, and it just, it makes sense for this location, and really, it's, we've found that it's more of a service that Uptown Valet offers, and, and from our experience at Aria, our clients are excited that they don't have to worry about it, and so happy to conform to that, to that requirement.
I see. So when you refer to your clients, let's say that's a, a wedding or something like that, perhaps it's built into the project that valet will be free or something like that for the people attending?
Yes, and we could do it exactly. We could do it one of two ways. We could just require them to have it like we do at Aria. We also require security guards. While the client does pay for them, we require security people on-site, which will do the same thing for the Franklin. But yes, so I, I don't know exactly how that would be finessed, if it would be built into the cost, but it would be built into our lease with exactly the bride and groom.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. Are there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Certainly. I'm Dan Kaufman, Kaufman Sign Company. We've been located and bootifying Minneapolis since 1935. And in the past, we've done many marquises and theaters in Minneapolis. We've done the Pantages, the Heights, the Coles Theater, just to name a couple off the top of my head, the Capri Theater. But I, I want to address the, the projecting sign. The city only has one issue, and that's with the square footage. Lisa, can I borrow one of your drawings that shows the primary use of the Franklin Theater sign facade? In the past, the city and the council has kind of looked at the primary use of a building when you go look back historically. The Franklin Theater, as you can see, there's, right now, they're allowing 101 square feet, what the city would like to be proposed for the sign. That's based on 67 feet of storefront, times 1.5, you get to 101 square feet. As you can see, the primary usage of this building many years ago, there was hundreds of square feet on this. And what we're trying to propose is a sign that's 130 square feet, and I'm sure you've seen these. That's quite a bit smaller than what was originally proposed and designed for the original theater. The way the city comes to the square foot might be an issue, and I'm here to kind of massage or negotiate or somehow get around the square foot issue. I know that's kind of hard to read, but the one in the middle, if you can see this outside, that line is in red, is how the city decides square footage. They put a rectangle around the, the sign. That's basically 5 times 26, gets you 130 square feet. This drawing right here is the exact same sign. I put a box around the top of the new, and I put a box around Franklin, and all of a sudden, the size of that sign drops down to, I can't read without my glasses, drops down to 110 square feet if you figure it that way. This one over here to the right, same, exact same sign, but if you take out all the dead space around it, it's actually 87 and a half square feet. I know, I know how the rules are, and I've been, we've been doing business for 50 years, but this is just maybe a little bit of, oh, I don't know, fodder for if some people are on the fence about deciding about the square footage, about how we, they go about it, and how they could vote in favor of the 130 square foot sign. Thank you. If you have any questions?
Let's see if there are any questions.
One question.
Commissioner Kronzer?
Is the proposed projecting sign, does that go above the existing roof or the coping of the building?
No, it does not. It does not project above the roof line.
Okay, thank you.
And it also just, and it really doesn't project below that archway either. The height of the building is 41 feet. This is 15, and 26 is right there. 15 and 26 is 41.
It was my understanding earlier this afternoon that you were okay with staff's recommendation to keep 101 as, as we do our measures. Is that not true anymore?
That is true. We've had a follow-up conversation on that.
Okay, I, I think...
Reduced to 2 is...
101?
101.
That's if they go down to a 5 by 22.
5 by 22.
Okay, I just, just wanted to clarify that because I had a different understanding, and now you're asking back to 130. So which, which, which way are we going? Thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak on this? If not, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have quite a few applications here.
Mr. President, I have a question for staff.
Yes.
In variance C, the variance for the reduced parking, is condition one, where it states the minimum parking requirement shall be provided through valet, is that referencing the 70 parking stalls required?
Yes, for right now, it's 70 spaces. That's basically to ensure that if parking requirements were to change in the future, they were not stuck to 70, like if the zoning code was amended.
Because it's not the 6, it's the 70.
No, it's the 70.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Any motions on this application, the CUP for Reception Meeting Hall? Staff recommends approval with four conditions. I will move approval myself. Can I have a second? Okay. Any discussion on that? If not, clerk, please call a roll on that.
Bender? Forney? Gagnon? Gisselman? Kronzer? Lipke-Pier? Slack? So that is 7-0.
Okay, A is approved. I will move B and C, the variance for the setback rear yard and for the parking requirement, noting that there's the second, or the first condition for the parking does call for the valet parking to be, the contract to be executed. Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Clerk, please call a roll on B and C.
Slack? Lipke-Pier? Kronzer? Gisselman? Gagnon? Forney? Bender? 7-0.
Okay, I will move staff recommendation on D, E, F, and G. That, D is the denial, keeping the sign to 101 square feet as we measure it. Can I have a second? Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call a roll on items D, E, F, and G.
Slack? Lipke-Pier? Kronzer? Gisselman? Gagnon? Forney? Bender? 7-0.
Okay, that takes care of that item number nine. Thank you very much for your participation. Now we move to item 11. By the way, if you're here for, other than item 11 or 12, everything else has been taken care of through the consent agenda, as posted up there. Our report will be from Mei Ling Anderson.
Good evening, Commissioners. Master Properties on behalf of TGMA Developers has submitted land use applications for the five properties between 2004 and 2018 Lindell Avenue South for a new six-story mixed-use development with 82 dwelling units. The applications before you tonight include a petition to rezone four of the properties from C1 to the C2 Neighborhood Corridor Commercial District, a conditional use permit to increase the maximum allowed height in the C2 district from four stories or 56 feet to six stories, 73 feet 6 inches, as well as two variances, one to reduce the minimum rear setback, and one to reduce the south interior side yard setback, and finally, site plan review. The parcels that make up the subject site currently belong to two zoning classifications, as you see in this map. The, the one at the corner, this is currently the C2 zoning district, and the remaining four are in the C1 district. So the site has split zoning. The site is located at the southwest corner of Lindell Avenue South and West Franklin Avenue. The entire site is approximately 35,000 square feet and currently contains two one-story buildings and two surface parking lots. The current uses on the site include a theater, a thrift store, barber shop, a dry cleaner, tailor, and an art gallery. The site is generally flat, however, on Franklin Avenue, there is an increase in grade to the west. There are commercial uses on all four corners of the intersection and along the Lindell Avenue South corridor, most of which are generally between one and two-story buildings. The area surrounding the site contains various commercial and residential uses, including bars, restaurants, retail spaces, a vision loss center, grocery stores, a gas station, and a laundromat. Directly to the west, and throughout the greater surrounding area, there are several three-to-four-story multifamily residential buildings with, and also low-density resident, low-density housing. This is a rendering of the proposed development. The applicant is proposing 82 residential units that would be above the first floor. The ground floor would contain the commercial uses, which would include 150-seat theater, about 3,800 square feet of retail space and a restaurant. The applicant is also proposing to construct a four-story parking facility to the rear of the site, and it would hold a total of 160 parking spaces. The staff report says 163, and the correction is it's actually 160 spaces. So just to, to get into the findings that support the applications before you, the, the rezoning petition is a result of the site having split zoning, and the rezoning, the rezoning of the four properties would result in a uniform zoning district and also allow a wider range of goods and services along both a community corridor, which would be Franklin Avenue, and a commercial corridor, which is Lindell Avenue South. This is called for in the city's comprehensive plan. Staff finds that rezoning these properties to C2 would be compatible, compatible with adjacent properties and zoning districts. As you may recall from the zoning map, there are several C2 properties just adjacent and also along Lindell Avenue South. For the conditional use permit, staff does support the, the increased height of the proposed building to 73 feet 6 inches, as detailed on pages 5 through 8. The entire building would not total 73 and a half feet above the adjacent grade. So as you see in the rendering, the, the tallest point is here, right at the corner. All, as it steps down on Lindell, that's five stories. So the, most of Lindell would actually experience more of a five-story building, and then the parking garage behind it is four stories. So another impact, well, another reason that staff is supporting the conditional use permit is because of the impact of topography in the area. So this, this doesn't show it very clearly, but the residential properties to the west are between seven and 10 feet above grade relative to the site, the subject site. This is a cross-section of the proposed development. It shows you that because of the grade change, the adjacent properties to the west are actually about level with the five, the top of the five-story portion of the building. The six-story portion would still be above that, but it does minimize the impact of shadowing. Let's see. I'm sure you can barely see this, but I wanted to address the variances. So the applicant is requesting a variance for the, the rear yard setback, which is along the west side, and also the south interior side yard setback. The south interior, interior side yard setback does not have a real, a real impact on the subject site or on neighboring sites. The, it's adjacent... It's adjacent to a one-story C1 building. The only reason the setback is there is because the stories above the first floor have residential windows and so that's triggering the setback and staff doesn't have a problem with that. For the west, the west rear setback, so this is actually triggered where we've said that the variance is to reduce it from fifteen feet to three and a half feet. So the shortest point between the building wall and the property line on this side is actually three-point-seven feet, which is right here. But the actual distance between the building wall and the adjacent residential property is more like eleven feet for the first thirty-seven feet away from Franklin. The staff's main concern is with the distance and the proximity of the parking facility, which is located here on the site, next to the residential properties to the west. The closest dimension would be twenty feet from building wall to building wall. The applicant has made progress in reducing, in expanding the distance between the proposed parking facility and the property line. However, as proposed right now, the design of the building is a very open design. So the parking facility that the applicant has brought forward is, you can see the slopes in the parking ramp going up and down and staff has concerns about screening and also noise and the lights and the impact that would have on the residential properties to the west. So as a condition, we're recommending that you add a condition to fully enclose all sides of the parking facility on the west and south sides to reduce that impact of the parking facility and also because the applicant is requesting one item of alternative compliance for all of site plan review. It's just related to the parking garage not being screened and that would take care of that as well. Staff is recommending approval with all conditions, I'm sorry, is recommending approval with conditions for all of the above applications based on the findings listed in the staff report. The applicant has agreed to the conditions that staff has recommended. Staff has received approximately thirty-three comments regarding the project, which have been included in your packets tonight. Many of these letters express concern for the height of the building and the building setback variances. Representative of Lowry Hill East Neighborhood Association has stated that the board has voted four to three to oppose the project. I'm here to help answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff at this time? All right, thank you. Seeing none, then we'd like the applicant to step forward and speak about this. And name an address for the record.
That works. Good evening, President Tucker and Commissioners. My name is Don Gerberding. I'm with Master Properties. We are the applicant for this project, 201 West Broadway in Minneapolis. I'm also a resident of the Lowry Hill East Neighborhood at 2747 Emerson. Thank you for the opportunity to present the Theater Garage Marquee Apartments this evening. We believe this is an exciting redevelopment project and for an important intersection, it's really a gateway to South Minneapolis. We've been working on this project for over a year. The project has seen multiple design improvements as a result of meetings with staff, council members, and seven meetings with three different neighborhood organizations. I have a quote that says, "Every project improves because of that process with the neighborhoods." And this is clearly the case here. This is a very complicated project programmatically with all these varied uses. I wish to thank the staff for all their hard work and their professionalism. There was just a myriad of how-to we, how-can-one with this project. We're here as the applicant to answer any questions or go into further or greater detail as those questions come up. I'd like to introduce Pete Keely from Collage Architects, who's the architect of record on this project. And Pete's here as well to answer any questions. So this project has been in planning a long time. I believe everyone is pretty well-versed in the project. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, so we can open the hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from Commissioners? One minute, Kronzer, Commissioner Kronzer.
I'd like to ask your architect two questions.
Okay. You know, I neglected to say one thing, that regarding the condition of approval of number four, it's regarding the west wall of the parking structure. The project or the applicant agrees to accept that that condition, that we will enclose that west wall of the parking structure. There's a clarification that I think we all know, but I just wanted to bring that point forward in that. An enclosed parking structure requires a ventilation system and that system's required by code to provide a source of fresh air, just like any circulation system. So consequently, in accordance with industry standards, a source for the fresh air must be provided and it will be designed with louvers to be architecturally pleasing, but we need to get air in there. So there will be one opening. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a good segue because I was about to ask for that. So do you have thoughts on how you might enclose the south and the west walls of the parking structure?
How, excuse me, Pete Keely, Collage Architects, Commissioner, yeah, I think that's an excellent question. I think it might be, it's, the enclosure part's easy, though making it look decent is, might be the rest of the question. This is a precast structure. So with the precast structure, we do have a couple of opportunities because the width and the depth of the beams is different than the width or the depth of the walls. So we have the ability to play with some wall depth. As was per the original and the ideas in the original, which was adding a green screen. So there would still be a combination of green screens and trellis work on that, which would form a lattice and kind of a broken-up facade. In addition to that, what we would begin to do is bring that wall in and out to create a pattern. Now, it is a, basically a three-story wall, which it has shrunk. We do have some ability on the top of that wall because it's an open ramp to do some of that in a railing. There would be a railing detail on the top. So I think we have the ability to kind of make kind of a nice line along that edge. So there, it's another question on the openness is, you know, we're assuming that the openness goes to the height of that forty-two-inch guardrail height, but there would likely be some sort of delineation along the top, which would provide some openness to lighten that portion up. It'd rely generally on the screening with the landscaping and then changing the wall planes and changing some materials. So that's a long way of saying that I found out about this about an hour ago and it requires a whole lot more thought, but open to...
You're essentially thinking that it would be a precast concrete wall with some texture, pattern, play versus taking the existing design and filling it in with something else?
That's kind of what I'm saying, actually, is that the precast design is the post and beam system and that would be infilled with a certain set of panels that were that wall depth.
Okay.
And so that that design that's there would have a separate set. It may still be precast, it may be CMU, but we can still have the ability to kind of modulate that wall rather than build a, say, poured concrete wall that would be continuous or tilt-up precast wall.
Other question. I asked this question at Community Hall a couple of weeks ago and didn't get a really good answer. So I'm wondering if you have more development on the fins on the corner of Franklin?
Yep.
And what they're for, what they're made out of, and why they're there and could they go away?
And unfortunately, I wasn't there at the time to talk about it, so it gives me the opportunity now. It's a perforated metal panel, so it's an aluminum kind of panelized system as a metal gauge system with an aluminum channel along that edge. It's doing a couple of things. So what it's doing is it's coming from the recesses, generally the recesses of the building. It is on the recess and then extends out past the recess. So where it is in the recess, it's actually screening the magic packs. And so one of the devices that we were using to screen the magic pack was to put a perforated panel in front of the magic pack, so you're not looking up. We went to great efforts to turn them ninety degrees, but that works great in elevation, but in perspective, you see that. So the panel was intended to kind of screen that edge and then bring it forward. The intent on the entire project and the modulation within that is to provide over time, especially at night and during the day in shadows, is that it kind of has this ability to morph and light patterns and shadows and so on and so forth. So it is creating that. On the east side, it does create some of the shadows that come through so that you'd have that play of light along that side. That's not as true on the north side, but we are continuing that. It's also to kind of connect the, you know, to kind of connect some of the, or provide some verticality within this. Now, the rest of the, it is a seamed metal panel. So I think it's doing, and then finally, it will provide the ability to grow things on it. So the thought was if you have this perforated panel, much like you have on the west side, is that individual tenants could begin to do potters plants and whatnot and begin to grow up this kind of lattice perforated panel. So can they go away? Yes, that's a possibility. But the intent is to provide some screening of the magic packs essentially and provide animation of the building.
So my spirit of the question was really to do it well. I don't want another, there's some examples around that haven't executed architectural details very well. So do it well or save your money and do something different.
Something else well.
Did you have other questions? Okay, other Commissioners, questions of the architect? I don't see any, thank you very much. We'll continue the public hearing. How many people want to speak on this topic? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And how many are basically for and how many are against? How many are for? One, two, three. I think what I'll do is I'll have, continue with our for and then we'll have, we'll conclude our twenty minutes, including the applicant's presentation and then have twenty minutes of those who are opposed. So right now, I'd like to have people who are for this project come up and speak, try and keep it brief. So let's say we got another twelve minutes or so and we'll hear what you have to say. Come on up and give your name and address for the record. And subsequent speakers, I hope you don't repeat too much. Fill in where the other speakers have not addressed this.
I'm Julia Curran. My address is thirteen twenty-five West Twenty-Fifth and a Half Street. But the history that I have with the corner goes back, at least, to my grandparents, who lived in 2011. The house was sold when my father was probably around thirty. He grew up there and so I've had a lot of family history about who lived there, who was nearby. And for anybody who might be from that location, you may see us walking by a couple of times a week and that's why we're not there for anything else. But I also frequent the Wedge, Steeple People Thrift Store, where I shop and volunteer, and the barber shop there is the main one that we go to. My basic thought, well, first, it's, I saw in the notes out there that it looks like it's not listed as a brown site, but my father remembers taking his car to an automotive place there, both for repair and to get gas. So I don't know if that information is, you know, has been recorded, if that was too long ago, but there, it apparently was a gas station for at least some time and I don't know if that affects the land mitigation. I tentatively support this. I support higher density in Minneapolis. I think it's good for the neighborhood. I think it helps bring more services in. It increases the frequency of public transit. It provides more people on the streets and overall, I am very much for having more people in our neighborhood. I have a slight concern about the sidewalk on the Franklin side, which has been very poorly shoveled historically, but I would hope that that would be something that would be addressed, both in how the area was built as well as how it was maintained. I am very hesitant about the amount of parking that's involved. It seems to be, I don't know what the air quality is. If you're allowing fresh air into a parking garage, I assume there's disgusting air going out. I know that people tend to idle a lot, especially in the winter. I don't know how that would be kept down in a parking ramp. And it seems like the majority of the footprint is for cars, which to me goes against where I'm headed. I have never driven where my friends have, are headed, my peers, who are not drivers, who drive very infrequently, who are mostly bikers, walkers, and bussers. So it seems like in terms of the amount of parking, I can understand where the neighbors have a very legitimate complaint about what their view is, what their air quality is, what noises they're hearing. But I support the height variance because since it's a lower location, I think it makes sense for that space and I very much support more density in Minneapolis. If this is the way that we get it, even with that much parking, I just hope there's a way of getting rid of it really soon and that there's ways of making sure that it doesn't negatively impact the air quality, which is already not great. I think that's it that I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Another person speaking in favor of the project? Come on up, give your name and address. Was that it? This is your turn. Don't fight over it.
I'll be pretty brief. My name's Nick Magrino. I live at two fifteen Oak Grove Street. So not technically in Lena or the Whittier neighborhood, but I do use this intersection as a pedestrian, usually at least a couple of times a week going to the Wedge or other points south of my neighborhood. Currently, the intersection is pretty dismal if you're walking through it, kind of dodging cars and buses and trucks and things like that. Obviously, this project will be a pretty big improvement over what's there right now, which is basically surface parking lot and a couple low-slung buildings. And I think it's really nice that the developer was able to incorporate the theater into the new project. I think that's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. Others? Come on up. Name an address for the record, please.
My name's Aaron Eisenberg. I live at seven oh nine Douglas, two and a half blocks away. Longtime YouTube and public access TV watcher, first-type speaker. So...
We have a fan.
I really, so much fun, too. I don't know, you know, so much fun. I can see why you guys love this. I live really close and right now, you know, this is a major intersection and it is an embarrassment. It's two major streets that should have a quality, high-density development and the developer has graciously listened to neighborhood feedback and I feel bent over backwards to make this happen and tried to thread a very tough needle between making it affordable, making it, you know, work with the neighborhood and making it economically feasible. And I think they've done a great job with that and I'm just here because I want to see this kind of stuff happen. I appreciate what the developer has done to make it work and I want to see it built. So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you very much.
My name's Michael Roden. I live at two eight four one Bryant Avenue South. I've lived in the Wedge for about a year and I lived downtown for two years before that. The reason I came to Minneapolis and the reason I want to stay in Minneapolis is because Minneapolis is an exciting place to be and it's growing. I think our city government, our new city government, is really looking for ways to grow Minneapolis in a sustainable and economically better way. And part of that, part of bringing our city into the future in a healthy way economically is density and is getting rid of so many accommodations for cars and car storage. And while I share the sentiment that I'd like to see even less parking, I think this is a great stepping stone to that future. I think Franklin and Lyndale are a, two very trafficked, very important thoroughfares in our city. And I think if not, if we can't grow at that intersection, then I don't know where we can grow. It seems like the most obvious spot in the Wedge and one of the best spots in the city. I know there's a lot of concern in the neighborhood about affordability and I share that concern. I'm a board member of Lena and I was, I was one of the three votes to approve this project. It was a respectful, but, you know, definitely a disagreement and a close vote. So there's, I think there's a lot of people in the neighborhood who share the sentiment of wanting to grow and a lot of them, unfortunately, either don't know or don't have the time to make their voice heard. But it seems everybody in my peer set that I talked to is very excited about this when they hear about it. Most of the time, they haven't heard about it. It seems the opposition is very well tuned in and has a lot, has the time and energy to do it. And I'm here speaking the best I can for the people who, like me, share the sentiment that we want to see Minneapolis grow, prosper, and go into the future in a, in a good way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any others wishing to speak generally in favor of the project? Anyone else? If not, okay. Anyone else? If not, okay.
Matthew Curran, 1724 Immersion Avenue South. I often walk with my father and sometimes by myself to the co-op across the street from the development. And I definitely think that increasing the residential population in the neighborhood is going to make walking across that intersection a nicer, nicer process.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, you were very efficient with your time. Let's move on to those who have concerns they want to express. Again, 20 minutes. We'll start it here. Come on up in whatever order you want. Be considerate of others who want to speak. Keep your comments brief. Keep them to the applications that we're dealing with, and try not to repeat too much. All right, come on up and name an address, please.
Hello, my name is Terry Burks. My husband, Dan Burks, is here with me. We live at 2115 Aldrich Avenue South, which is towards the south end of the block. So we are in the affected area, and we've been owners for 22 years. Our home was built in 1898, and we've made substantial improvements. Basically, we're very committed to the community as well and the quality of its neighboring buildings. And we do appreciate the interest of the builders and the property owners to improve and invest in the corner. That's very important, and we'd like to see the improvements. However, we would like to ask that it be done according to the zoning that was developed by the city and the community leaders just a few years ago, so that it would be four stories high instead of six. We think that four stories is very acceptable, and, and we are in support of density. We get that it's going to happen. It is happening, but we want it to be respectable. We think that a six-story building on Franklin here at this corner would look out of place. If you were to drive, which I do from this area all the way over to Hiawatha, there isn't any other buildings at six stories high, including a park in Portland and Nicolette where there's some recent developments. So as was noted earlier, that if you'd like to build buildings that are similar to other buildings, four stories would be more appropriate and consistent with what has been built along the Franklin Avenue corridor. We think that the high building will dwarf neighboring buildings, of course, shadow streets and backyards, block neighbor's views, and we are concerned about the setback. When it's that close to the property line, it's very hard to do any maintenance. And already, as was noted earlier about spaces that are small and made smaller, they do become habitats for vagrant activities, including defecation and drug dealing. And we see that in our block. The other thing that's really important to note here is that we don't have any alleyways to buffer this kind of height. So on the south side of the wedge, which we call Lena, you had that kind of spatial buffer with the Midtown Greenway, the bike path, and the commercial activity to buffer that kind of height. But up at this end, we're really butting right up against the residential properties, and that's why we're concerned. And we are in favor of a four-story building, and if the developer were to propose a building in that height, we would be open to more variances or responding to those questions in some ways that would help them have a better project. And maybe if they reconsidered some of the mixed use, they might be able to gain the density that they want by eliminating some garage space and maybe some functions that may not be fully in use throughout the period that would add to the residential and still meet a four-story building height. So we thank you for hearing our concerns, and we would like you to vote no for these variances and to build according to what is consistent with the Franklin Avenue corridor and with the zoning that has been planned.
Thank you very much. Your name and address. You've got about 16, 17 minutes left.
Hi, my name is Deanna Hague, and I live at 2009 Aldrich Avenue South. So I will actually be directly behind the parking garage. However, I'm in the co-op, and I'm sure you guys have all received lots of my letters, so I won't get into too much detail here because I'm hoping that you've read what I've sent to you in my packet, in your packets. However, just one note is that our co-op building is three stories, and there's six units on the front and six on the back, and I am in the back. And so I will be facing directly into the wall of the parking garage. So that is my front yard. I've been coldly called a nimby by lots of people, not in my backyard, but actually it's my front yard, so just wanted to point that out. I was a longtime resident and renter in that neighborhood for five years, or four and a half years, until I just bought my place at the end of October this last year. And it does concern me that it's discussed now that this project has been worked on for over a year when I didn't find out until January, and I would not have bought my place in October had I known that I was suddenly going to be looking into a wall. So just wanted to point that out. So I, I also just wanted to stress that, you know, I don't live in, nor do I want to live in, New York, San Francisco, or Dallas. I want to live in Minneapolis, and there's plenty of space here for everyone. There's no valid reason that I see for the developer and his partners to receive the rear setback variances that they requested and the rezoning and the conditional use permits that would allow them to build six stories. They'll encroach on my front yard, bringing the parking garage just a car length away, a car length, just, just think about that, from my front windows as well as five other neighbors in my building. It's unfair and unjust to subject me and my neighbors to simply, to this simply because it is more economically feasible than for them to build outside of, for them to build outside of the current zoning laws. So I'd like to request that, that the developer just build everything within the current zoning laws as they're currently written. And I'd like to ask, if the soil conditions are so poor that they cannot build the parking structure underground as the developer has stated, then I'd like to ask how it's possible that that same soil can support a six-story structure? It would make more sense to me, I would think, in the long run, for them to build the parking garage underground, and then they can add on 100 extra spaces, whereas if you note that there's actually only 20 of them that are public spaces. Of all that parking, it's all for the theater garage and Rudolph's. There's only 20 public parking spaces. If they want to add additional parking spaces for the public, they should go underground where they could add like 100 of them, and then, and they can simply just build the retail space and restaurant space and apartments in three stories as opposed to six, or even four, you know, as currently zoned. And they'd make a ton more money if they had more parking spaces underground. Might cost a little more upfront, but they'll have their money back in 10 years as opposed to 20 or 30. You'll find also in my written statement that I also have concerns regarding increased traffic congestion. The in and out of where the, the parking garage is, is right across from the wedge, and they already have a traffic cop sitting there directing traffic. So I'm really concerned about that, or maybe it's not directly across from the wedge, but that's where I saw it in the, in the packet. But anyway, so that's one of my concerns. The other concern that I have is the impact that the construction will have on my 100-plus-year-old home. We would like to ask that, that the developer, you know, be sure that we are not getting more destruction when the construction is happening. I'll wrap this up in just a second. The uncharacteristic height and mass of the development in our neighborhood and the longevity of its future residents, along with the unprecedented close proximity to the parking structure of its residential neighborhoods. So I'd just like to ask the development be designed within current zoning laws. And I did want to thank staff, though, for recommending that the parking structure is enclosed. So thank you for that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Michael Friedman. I live at 2105 Aldrich Avenue South. And about a decade ago, I chaired a city board for three years and did a lot of after-work meetings that were three, four hours with public testimony, so I do appreciate your patience and time here. My, what I see in this project is that there's a lot being requested, and I did submit a written testimony that I'm not going to repeat here. But when people, the common understanding of an exception or a variance is something that's a little bit of a change. And when you're going to something in the mid-'50s to the mid-'70s in height, and you're going from something at the same time, from 15 to 3 at the narrowest in setback, and two buildings that, and building difference of private residences 20 feet away from a wall instead of 30 feet, and even closer in the co-op, that's a pretty big ask. And what I basically am asking for, rather than taking a direct position, is that there's some thoughtful contemplation about what is the standard for justifying that. And I didn't hear it from the staff. I heard topography, but there's other ways of dealing with topography besides the proposal. I didn't hear anybody, and the city has made equity a primary concern, and that's a primary concern for me, but there's no one here testifying about how this project in any way improves equity, access to low-income housing, disability housing, which should be a prime consideration on a transit corridor as well. And so the review, given that lack of anything positive, what it seems like is it's the right of one property owner versus property owners who are in abutting parcels. And where do you draw the line about where does one property owner's vision of change require the impact that testimony is showing on the other property owners? And I would just ask that the city staff address that, and you deliberate that yourselves before you take a vote on this. The one other thing I just want to mention, I appreciate that the staff recommendation for the parking structure be closed. However, I don't speak architect, and it sounded like the architect was saying, "Yeah, but we need air, so it's going to be open." And I just want to say, closed is closed, and it's their problem to solve, not anybody else's.
Okay, thank you. Others wishing to speak, express your concerns? Come on up right now. Come on.
Hi, Susan Bodie, 2750 Dupont. I, I share concerns with what a lot of other people have already said, but was briefly touched on, but two, two issues that this building has compared to other mixed-use residential in, in the southern part of our neighborhood is that all pieces of land are not created equal. And this one has some major problems, one of which is the severe flooding that takes place. Franklin Lyndale used to be called Lake Blaisdell. It was, it was a little lake. And anytime it rains, it becomes a lake again. A heavy rain, it's severe flooding. The other thing is Mr. Gerberding himself has told our neighborhood that the soil is so poor and unstable that he would have to drive pilings down to the bedrock in order to, to hold the building up. And because of those two issues, the normal place where you put parking is underground, especially for residential. I mean, all the buildings in Uptown have underground parking for residential. The ones that I've seen, Elan, Track 29, Flux, all of them, they then sometimes have separate area for commercial that is not mixed in with the residential parking, and so that the residential part can be secure. This, because of, I think a lot of the problems that this building has is the parking structure. Has to be a tall parking structure above ground because nothing can go underground because of the unstable soil and the flooding issues. So that makes it different. It's not the same as another piece of property a mile away. There's already severe, well, I should say, there's, there has been criminal activity like drug dealing and fights and shootings and things because of some of the nightlife in the area. And I would think twice about being a resident who has to share a parking space with anybody off the street who comes in there to party, tell whatever. I mean, I, I think it's, it's asking a lot to have the residential and the commercial mingle together without secure for the, for the residential. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Others? We have about seven minutes left if you want to speak.
Hi, John Bodie, 2750 Dupont Avenue South. I wasn't going to speak at this, but I have a feeling, I don't think the city actually has a plan of what they want to do. The Lowry Hill Neighborhood Association, over a year ago, probably a year, three, four months ago, requested the city to go over our zoning and try and do some rezoning with our neighborhood. And we were promised a year, in a year they would start, well, this hat, that year happened, and all of a sudden, the city isn't interested in doing it because they're looking at an overall bigger project for the whole city. Well, by the time that happens, the Lowry Hill East Neighborhood Association will no longer be necessary to study us because it'll all be developed. We have zoning, and I'm in favor of developing this corner because I think it needs it. But why don't we stick with the zoning we've got? I have a vision of a four-story building and maybe townhouses, row houses down Lyndale Avenue, something that'll attract families, more people. We've got enough apartments along the Greenway, which just attracts the young urban professionals, single urban professionals. But we're trying to gentrify our neighborhood by not making any housing for families or low-income people. Pretty soon, all the people who work in all these bars and restaurants in Uptown won't be able to afford to live in our neighborhood anymore. And I think the city should take a look at what they're doing, where they want their development, and I think this one is just too much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come on up. Got time for two or three, if you keep to two minutes.
Sarah Lynn Romanichin, 2111 Aldrich, and he is really hard to follow, so I apologize. Basically, I just wanted to say that I'm also on the Lena Board, and I did vote to not support this project. People are moving here from New York City to get away from buildings like this. We don't want to be New York City. We want to be unique. And we will have no tourism if we look like everyone else. This extremely well-publicized development does not fit with the surrounding buildings. A four-story building would be acceptable, something a little more unique, something that fits in with its surrounding area. The garage is way too close to the buildings behind it. It just simply is. There's no alley. And there's nothing else to say about that. It's just too close. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else? We don't need to take more testimony, but there's time if somebody else has comments. If not, I will close the public hearing. Oh.
This is going to be very brief. I just want, my name's Barry Flam. I'm a business owner right at 2106 Lyndale Avenue South. I run the pet store there. And I would just like to go on record, let's follow the current zoning. It's there for a reason. I have never heard, you know, I'm a brand-new business owner, very successful. Coming on my one-year anniversary, I've been telling my customers for a year they have a free place to park right next to my building. Not once have I heard anything about the discussion of length of project. I mean, how long is this project going to go on? How is it going to disrupt not only the, the current residents, but the business owners? I've heard that the infrastructure of Lyndale and Franklin, you know, the sewer and water lines will not support this development without being redone. So I have this vision of this whole area that's already got a horrible traffic issue being just torn up and people avoiding it like the plague. So, and we are not, we are not New York. I have a very good customer that's from New York that moved here, that loves the city. And I just think we need to be very thoughtful about what the impact of a development project of this scale is going to do to that corridor. So, thank you.
Okay, last call for any who want to share some concerns about this project. All right, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, we have five applications to deal with. Commissioner Lipke, here.
I actually had a question for the applicant.
Okay.
Either, either the architect or Don, whichever one. I just.
Mr. Gerberding, come on up.
So just really briefly, since two things were brought up in testimony that I was just curious about, what is your understanding of the construction time and the impact this will have on the surrounding area? Is my first question.
We are, we are estimating that construction will be approximately 14 months, 13 to 14 months.
Okay, and then my second question revolves around equity issues were brought up, and I just wanted to know what your understanding of that was and what the role your building plays in that. It's a little bit unclear.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear something issues?
Equity issues, affordable housing, things to do with the thrift store. I mean, I'm just kind of curious. It sounds as though people are concerned as though these amenities that help people in their neighborhood won't be there, and there won't be housing for them. So I just was curious as to what position your building was taking.
Right. Commissioner, from the beginning, we have said that this is not luxury housing. This project is priced to be affordable housing, and the target demographic is the people who live and work in the neighborhood. And so by way of rent structures, we are hoping to be in that 20 to 25% below what one sees, I'm sorry, 15 to 20% below what one sees along the Greenway.
Okay, and then in terms of businesses that are currently there staying, the theater garage is staying. What of the other businesses on the premises, are they staying going?
Yes, the theater garage is relocating into the project. We are, a restaurant will occupy the corner, and we have not leased any of the additional retail spaces.
Okay, so the existing retail spaces that are. Okay, so the existing retail spaces that are currently onsite are going to be moving elsewhere, or are they?
We don't know yet. But there is space available if they choose.
Thank you.
Okay.
One question.
Commissioner Kronzer.
Mr. Gerberding, have you considered an existing building assessment prior to construction or do you have plans to review and document the existing buildings around the site prior to construction and monitor anything that you see?
Yes, as part of the presentation that we made in one of our meetings with the Lena Association, we have contracted with a geotechnical engineer and he talked about the process by which seismographic monitoring will be done. There will actually be instruments attached to the surrounding buildings so that we can document if there's any movement or vibration that can affect these buildings structurally.
Okay, thank you. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any motions on the application A to rezone? If not, I will move the staff recommendation.
I'd like to move staff recommendation for the rezoning.
Okay, there's a second? Okay, moved and seconded to rezone C1 to C2. Any discussion? Don't see any, please call a roll.
Forney. Gagnon. Kisselman. Kronzer. Lipke-Pier. Slack. So, that's five to two.
Thank you, we approve the rezoning. Do you want to continue, Commissioner Kronzer?
Motion to approve staff recommendation for the conditional use permit for increasing the height.
Okay. Did you want to include the variances?
I'll do those next.
Okay, so B, C, and D?
Yeah, just B.
Okay, there's a second? Okay, moved and seconded, CUP for height of the building. Did you want to speak to that?
I mean, really quickly, you know, there's clear city policy to locate density along commercial corridors. This project is both at a commercial corridor and a community corridor. There's transit lines on both the major east-west roads and the north-south road. So, it's pretty clear that there's policy to support the added density here.
Okay. Commissioner Lipke-Pier and then Commissioner Bender?
Yeah, I'm going to be supporting this motion only because even though it seems like a majority of the issues people had with height were regarding the parking ramp, and it's my understanding that that would actually fall within the current zoning allowed. So, reducing the height wouldn't really have an impact greatly on the height of the ramp that would appease your concern. So, unfortunately, it wouldn't make a difference. So, I will be supporting it.
Commissioner Bender?
Thanks. I just wanted to briefly note the difference here between the conditional use permit, which means allowed with conditions, and the variance, which means, you know, needing to show evidence of different criteria. So, CUPs mean that this is allowed with conditions, and I think the staff report details how this project meets the conditions of our CUP requirements. So, I'll also be supporting the CUP. And I think, you know, originally this building was higher along the entire length, and I think the response to removing the original request for an FAR variance and getting the building within our bulk requirements was appropriate. So, I supported that as well.
Okay, other discussion on application B, the CUP for height? I don't see any, and please call a roll on B.
Forney. Gagnon. Kisselman. Kronzer. Lipke-Pier. Slack. That is six to one.
Okay, the CUP is approved. Commissioner Kronzer?
Move staff recommendation for variance C and D, C being the rear yard setback and D being the side yard setback.
Okay, do I have a second? Second, okay, moved and seconded, approve staff recommendation for C and D. Is there any discussion on that? I don't see any. Okay, please call a roll on C and D.
Lipke-Pier. Sorry, I keep having trouble seeing your name today. Kronzer. Kisselman. Gagnon. Forney. Bender. That's five to two.
Okay, those are approved. Finally, E, site plan review.
Motion to move site plan review with staff recommendations and six conditions. I'd like to add a seventh condition.
What is your proposed seventh addition?
Proposed seventh condition, the applicant shall perform an existing building survey and monitor said report during construction.
Okay, that's moved. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Did you want to speak to that? No? Okay. Mr. Wittenberg.
Commissioners, I'd ask that you consider addressing the issue of the air intake or exhaust on the west and/or south wall, just so we have absolute clarity about that for staff's sake and neighboring property owners and the applicant.
I will propose this eighth variance condition.
Eighth condition?
No, not variance. That the ingress and egress for the ventilation be controlled by mechanical louvers, meaning that it's closed only when the system is required to function.
Were you looking for more specificity?
And the intent is that those louvers be allowed on the west wall. That's correct?
That the louvers be allowed on the west or the south wall is deemed the most appropriate location.
Thank you.
For all.
Okay, that sounds like the sort of motion we have. Applicant will work with staff to place the ventilation to be controlled by mechanical louvers on the west or south wall. Is that correct?
That would be acceptable, that'd be fine.
All right. So, that's an additional condition. Did we get a second on that? Okay, moved and seconded. Commissioner Lipke-Pier, some discussion?
I actually had a question for number seven in regard to monitoring it. Are you proposing that they do anything with what they find as a result of their monitoring or is it just that they monitor it? I just wanted to make sure so it's not a...
I would suggest they follow industry standards with, in terms of the monitoring. There's a pretty well-established industry standard for these things.
Thank you.
If we need that.
Okay, but let's, okay, we've already added seven, haven't we? Okay, so eight is the instruction about adding the ventilation and louvers on the west or south wall, working with staff. Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we now have a site plan review as recommended by staff with two additional conditions. Any other changes commissioners want to propose? Any further discussion on the site plan as a whole? If not, we will have the clerk call a roll on the site plan review.
Bender. Forney. Gagnon. Kisselman. Kronzer. Lipke-Pier. Slack. That's five to two.
Okay, that concludes our business on item number 11. So, we turn to item number 12, which is a zoning code text amendment. Thank you all for your testimony, both sides very succinct, admirably so. The zoning code text amendment pertaining to farm stands, we'll have a staff report by Lisa Steiner. You're still here, how nice. We'll just wait a few minutes, let things clear out, I think.
Can you tell her?
Yeah, why is it on here? Okay, yeah. We have read it, so you can be brief.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. This zoning code text amendment to amend the regulations pertaining to farm stands, that would amend chapters 520, 535, 536, and 537. So, currently, farm stands are allowed as accessory to community gardens, market gardens, and urban farms. A temporary use permit must be obtained in order to operate a farm stand. They're also subject to certain standards listed in the temporary uses chapter of the code. These standards include that the farm stands can only sell products that are grown on site, they can only operate for 15 days a year, they can only operate from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and only one stand and one temporary sign are allowed, and both must be removed when the farm stand's not in operation. Also, they're not allowed in the I-3 general industrial district. So, the proposed amendment would allow farm stands accessory to community gardens, market gardens, and urban farms, but without the requirement of a temporary use permit. It would move the specific standards from the temporary use chapter to the accessory uses chapter, and it would alter some of the standards. First, the proposed amendment would allow farm stands to operate for 75 days a year, the same number of days per year that a farmer's market can operate. Also, the proposed amendments would allow the sale of products from farms and gardens which are occupied and cultivated by the same producer but are not necessarily grown on the same site on which they are sold. The rest of the standards are proposed to remain as they are currently. The purpose of the amendment is to allow farm stands to operate without a temporary use permit and to relax some of the standards, but another purpose is that it's intended to remove an inconsistency with the state constitution, which states that no license shall be required to peddle the products of a farm or garden. Potential problems that staff just wants to note is, that might be created by the amendment is that there might be an increased risk for the farm stand to cause a nuisance to neighbors if they are allowed to operate for 75 days per year and aggregate their produce and therefore have higher sales volumes. In your packets, you'll find the summary of Pier City research, I won't go into that in detail. The majority of Pier Cities do limit sales to only products grown on site, so I just wanted to note that Minneapolis, if we were to, if you were to approve the proposed amendments, Minneapolis would have a more relaxed standard than most cities by allowing the aggregate sales. Staff found that the amendment was consistent with the compliance policies listed on page eight and is recommending approval. Including in your packets also was a letter of support from the Food Council, which also had a few recommended changes, and they're actually here to speak to those changes. But for now, I'll take any questions you might have.
Commissioner Lipke-Pier?
Just wanted to double-check that it's just to allow the sale of produce, not other things like what you find in the Minneapolis farmer's market, or this sort of stuff.
Right, it's the products of a farm and garden, so not value-added products.
Thank you.
Other questions? I don't see any. Okay, thank you much. I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this, please come on up and give your name and address and tell us your concerns.
Thank you, I know it's a very long day for you all. My name is Zoe Holloman and I live at 3120 12th Avenue South. And I'd just like to thank the chairperson and the council for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I work at Appetite for Change in North Minneapolis, and we work to bring the community together through community cooking workshops, through community gardening, and through working with local growers and business owners to build and support a community food system. I manage our Fresh Corners program and I work with nine small urban growers on the north side to supply high-quality produce to restaurants, cafes, farmers' markets, corner stores, farm stands, churches, and other community centers. I am also a proud member of Homegrown Minneapolis Food Policy Council, and I'm happy to work with people in and out of this room to make food and the food system and food policy accessible to all of our communities. I am here today representing the Food Policy Council's position, but I also stand here as a community food advocate, and I work with local growers every day, and I see the struggles that they go through in trying to find markets and find ways to market what they're doing against, you know, big corporations. It's really hard. I am standing next to one of the incredible local food champions today. His name is Reggie, and he's going to speak after me. But he is working very hard to meet market demands and get his produce into the community. The Food Policy Council supports the proposed zoning code text amendments to the farm stand regulations, which were read by Lisa, thank you. And the Food Policy Council recommends the following additional changes, and I'll read those, in relation to Title 20, Chapter 537, Section 537.110 under Farm Stand. Part three, sales shall be limited to between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. We believe that the sales should be allowed until 8:00 p.m. instead of 7:00 p.m. Because 8:00 p.m. is really still a reasonable time for, you know, neighbors getting home who might be taking a walk, to allow for additional sales. It's a pretty short window still, and, you know, reasonable time for people, you know, to frequent the farm stands. And that, you know, farm stand activity is generally quiet, not like a party. So, we don't think it would pose significant threats to quiet neighborhoods. And then part six, allowing multiple signs to be displayed during the growing season. We recommend that more than one sign be allowed to be permissible and throughout the growing season, as opposed to only during farm stand operation hours, to better accommodate communication with potential customers. So, a lot of times, you know, you're not exactly on a heavy foot-traffic street, and so it'd be nice to be able to have a sign to say, "Hey, this way, there's a farm stand." Urban farmers and market gardeners are contributing to the healthy, to the community's healthy food access opportunities. They are creating beautiful productive spaces in communities like the north side, and they are supporting the local economy in ways that keeps dollars in our communities. And by supporting the farm stand amendments and the suggestions presented today, we can all help local growers have better opportunity to grow and sustain their enterprises and help neighborhoods have better access to healthy local food. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, well, good evening, councilmember, chairperson. My name's Reginald Hunter of 1511 Morgan, Minneapolis, and I am an urban farmer. I'd like to speak to two of the few issues that are on the table today, one being to definitely increase the 15 days to 75 days. Obviously, what could come out of that would be a higher level of clientele base, residual sales, as well as less spoilage of good food that we're offering. The second issue would be signage. Signage, from my understanding, we're allowed one sign, or sandwich board sign. Obviously, folks will travel in from different directions. This would help us if, so much if, we can add at least two to three more signs in different directions, making it easily, making us easily located so there's no confusion. As an urban farmer and an entrepreneur, a lot of folks forget that second word, entrepreneur. In any business, you have to have proper signage, so this would be a great benefit if we can make that change. This would also help us to be more progressive at getting the word out of fresh, healthier, grown food for the community. So, today I humbly ask, these amendments to the farm stand regulation be accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on these text amendments? I don't see anyone. Any questions, commissioners? And I will close the public hearing. Thank you. So, commissioners, we have just one item here to approve the proposed zoning code text amendment. Do I have a motion? Okay, moved and seconded. Commissioner Kronzer?
I just wanted to bring up something for us to discuss real quick. The issue about having the one sign that must be taken down, it's only up while they're selling the food. I'm wondering if we could consider the sign to stay up during the growing season. It allows folks, when they're not, you know, when they're not selling food, that they can notice, "Oh, like, there's a place here that I can come back and buy food when it's open." So, that's just food for thought if we want to consider that.
Okay. Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That change would be fine with me. I wanted to thank you guys for staying for so long and for all the work that went into this. I think this is a fantastic, common sense change to support locally grown food in our city, and I'm really excited that we're bringing this forward, and I fully support it.
Commissioner Lipke-Pier?
Yeah, I too am appreciative of this as a resident of North Minneapolis. I'm very much aware of the gardens and urban farms we see kind of springing up over. It's really refreshing and invigorating. It's really refreshing and invigorating. I, in discussing Commissioner Cronzer's motion, I actually, I think that, you know, being allowed to have a sign that isn't able to be moved, something on a post or something that would tell maybe hours that you can come back and buy something, this is a great idea because I, you know, you never know when you're allowed to come and buy stuff. The idea of more signage, though, I think if there's additional signage, it should be like a temporary signage ward that's only put up when the market is open. That way, we don't have a lot of sign clutter in a residential area, but I do think that it would be beneficial to have, like, signage wards at a corner saying, turn left, you know, for good food. So anyway, just my thoughts there. I don't know how you want to word that or phrase that, because I think it's an issue of different types of signs as well as quantity. Thank you.
Okay, did we want to formalize this thinking about signs, or just pass along a comment to Z and P that we think additional signs might be in order to improve wayfinding and such?
Let's formalize it, Mr. President. So I would make a friendly amendment to the proposal to modify... Which one is it here? Number six, under Chapter 537, say one temporary sign may be displayed during the growing season, but must be removed from the premises or stored inside a structure when the growing season is not growing.
Yeah. And the growing season is defined elsewhere in the amendment? So we need to... I think we need, if we're getting more specific, talk about when the growing season... Was it?
Mr. President, it says 75 days for the...
During that 75 days, the sign is when your sign would be up.
Yeah, and we don't define growing season, so... And people could be growing things in greenhouses during the winter, so.
I think we should confine it to these 75 days.
Sorry, say again?
I think we should confine it to these 75 days, unless you have a different notion to try to get at.
So that would mean it would have to come down and come back up again. So maybe we can say through the months of approximately April through October?
Yeah, there were other cities that did that. So, yeah, it wouldn't be our charter.
Okay, do we think we have some specific language here that we can pass along?
I think we get the intent and can craft that language prior to the zoning and planning committee.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that added suggestion, do we have a motion to approve this? We did. Second, all in favor, say aye. Posed. Okay, so we will add that. I think we need a roll call on the whole thing. Now, did I? Okay. Thank you very much.
Just a reminder, no committee to hold this Thursday.